Good evening, and welcome to this, the October 24th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting to order. Let the record show that all the members of the City Council are present and accounted for. I ask that you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
[inaudible]
As you know, we just came out of closed session. Mr. Alessio, would you care to comment on the action taken in the closed session?
There was no formal action taken in closed session. Direction was given regarding negotiation parameters only.
Excellent, thank you very much. Proclamations and presentations. Some of the fun stuff we get to do. We're going to swear in several new commissioners tonight. We have, for the Airport Commission, we'll be swearing in Beth Duff. We also have coming back are Kathy Ornellis and Alex Shizzi. They're going to be in the audience. Alex is the Airport Commission Chair. And for the Human Services Commission, I'd like to ask Rovi Lynn Antonio and Sal Tompkins to please come up and take the oath of office. I believe I need a motion to confirm the...
So moved.
Oh, so moved?
Seconded.
Seconded by the Vice Mayor. And also, is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great. And then Navdeep Kaur, if you're here. So I'd like to invite Beth Duff, Rovi Lynn Antonio, and Sal Tompkins, and Navdeep Kaur to please rise and take the oath of office. Come on up. It's safe. We're on camera, there's too many witnesses. place. Thank you. Onto the 2.02, which is the Beautification Committee Annual Update, and that'll be followed by the presentation of the 2016 Beautification Awards. Mr. Olson, Chairman of the Committee.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm Tyler Olson, as the mayor announced. I'm the Chair of the Beautification Committee. I would like to thank the City Council for having us present our annual report this evening on the activities of the Beautification Committee in 2016. I would also like to thank the rest of the committee. We have present one member here, Barbara Hickman. And I'd also like to thank the other members who could not make it this evening. And I'd also have a special, would like to make a special thank you for the city staff, especially Jeff Schaefer, Roberta Matthews, and Kathy Hughes, who have been amazing in their supporting, support for the committee. The major accomplishments for the committee this year include our Arbor Day celebration. In March, the committee held its annual Arbor Day celebration, where we presented and handed out 1,200 seedlings to second graders throughout the city of Livermore. Students learned about the history of Arbor Day, the importance of trees in our community, and also how to plant and care for their seedlings. Last spring, the committee assisted the city with its Volunteer Day, which included, which involved approximately 650 volunteers working on 14 projects, including graffiti abatement. In July, the committee, in conjunction with the city's Water Resources Division, hosted a booth in the farmer's market. It was a great opportunity for our community outreach. We were able to promote our annual beautification awards, as well as the city's graffiti fighting program. We signed up several new volunteers to the graffiti fighting program, gave out graffiti abatement kits at the farmer's market. Last year, the committee heard and decided two tree appeals. Currently, the committee is in the process of performing our annual park review. Each of the members of the committee are in the process now of touring the parks, ensuring that they're clean and safe, and providing feedback to city staff on potential improvements. Finally, as part of tonight's Agenda Item 2.03, the committee is requesting the City Council present four beautification awards. Like last year in selecting this year's winner, the committee placed an emphasis on water-wise landscaping. So if it's okay with the committee, we'd like to move on to the beautification awards.
Okay, certainly. Thank you.
On the video, we're going to have before and after pictures of this year's winners. First up is 685 Carla Street. The property owner, Gary Ross, replaced his lawn, if you see over a before picture here, with the after picture with decorative rocks and drought-resistant plants. The committee selected this property because of the use of the rocks, hardscape through the driveway, and the different rock textures and the plants, and producing an appealing contrast of color and texture. The committee also appreciated that Mr. Ross incorporated the existing crepe myrtle tree here and here in the redesign of the project. The next property is 1113 Farmington Way. Property owner Joy Fisher, again, removed her lawn and the hedge along the front, and replaced it with drought-tolerant resistant plants. The committee also really appreciated the front patio space and open outdoor living area in the front that they found to be inviting. So 2291 Sherry Court. Property owner Carolyn Piazza replaced her lawn with a great patio space and landscaping. The committee really liked the hardscape, the wall, the pathway into the inside with the patio, the ornate gate, the water feature in the back of the patio, as well as the pots that were incorporated in the front of the property. The committee also, you can't see it in this picture, but it also incorporated existing trees in the property that were there prior to renovation. The last award goes to 2867 Vine Court. Property owners Jim and Joe Trop, like the other winners, removed their grass from the front yard, replaced it with a beautiful hardscape, which, it's hard to see in this picture, but there's a path that walks it, goes up here with a nice patio in the back, and drought-resistant landscaping that includes drip irrigation. The committee also appreciated the uniqueness of the redesign, which incorporates the grapevines along the front, which the committee felt captured the character of Livermore wine So now, if the mayor would like to present the awards?
Certainly. Are they here tonight? First one, we have Gary Ross. We used to work on haunted houses together. Carolyn Piazza.
Actually, that's not my wife. That's the landscaped wife.
Oh, okay.
And Jeff, can we...
Did your designer have a card?
Can we see the sign as well, Jeff? More yard signs.
Yeah, bring your signs.
Thank you. Absolutely. Well, it's a more beautiful city now, so it's a win for everybody. Is Navdeep Kaur here? Oh, the oath of office. You just missed it, but it was probably the traffic, wasn't it?
Yes, was that work? I'm so sorry.
Oh, that's fine. So now's your opportunity to take the oath of office for the Human Services Commission. So step on up. Thank you for offering to volunteer your time.
Thank you.
Once again, thank you very much. It's very rewarding work. Okay, with that, we go into the Citizens Forum. These are items, I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. These are for items that are not on the agenda, and because they're not on the agenda, the City Council can neither deliberate nor take action on anything that is brought up during the Citizens Forum. So with that, I have about a dozen cards here. John Stein, Jeanne King, Tom Jefferson. John Stein.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. At the last meeting, Councilmember Spodowski brought up the Livermore tarweed as a suggestion for a city native plant. The local botanists have found three populations, or at the start of the study, they found three populations in North Livermore. One during the course of the study had a road put over it, and it disappeared. Another had a BMX tract put over it, and most of the plants were destroyed. The third one is on city-owned property, and I'd like to read the last paragraph of the article. Which brings up our last story. I'd like to tell you about the Livermore tarweed. That field that Bartosz, the botanist, had been standing in for over an hour. The city owns it. Livermore controls the land on which it, which grows the last stand of the Livermore tarweed. Bartosz laughs. The city wants to dig up the land so it can receive mitigation credit for creating wetland habitat for the threatened red-legged frog. There is very little alkali sink land left out in North Livermore, and it hosts a unique population, not only of the Livermore tarweed, but also the bracketed birds beak and other endangered species, as well as perhaps some other undiscovered ones. And first, I was wondering if I could ask you, or through you, the staff, whether in fact, the last population of the Livermore tarweed exists, or are we making an extinct plant, the city native plant? A second thing I noticed while putting up signs throughout Livermore is that there are an incredible number of empty tree wells, due to the drought mainly. But we're becoming more of the woodchip city rather than the tree city. And this would be a good time to start replanting, and I was wondering if you might consider allocating some thousands of dollars to replacing the trees in the tree wells with drought-tolerant species, crepe myrtles, Siberian elms, locusts, or diodor cedars. I think a small investment now would return large benefits over the years as the plants mature. And finally, at the last meeting, or I'm not sure if it was the last meeting or the state of the city, you said that the city was putting money aside for capital improvements to spend during the next recession, which is probably a few years away. And I was wondering if it might be worthwhile issuing the bonds now for the replacement of city chambers, and constructing them in a few years when the costs are lower. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. And we'll get somebody back on the tarweed. Jeanne King, Tom Jefferson, David Rounds.
Good evening. I want to emphasize that I'm speaking for myself and for the organization of which I'm associated. The city has violated its policy of live broadcast and video recording of council meetings when votes are taken. Workshops where no votes are taken are not videoed, but regular and special council meetings are routinely videoed. The council meeting of February 27th is one example of a special council meeting that was video recorded by Channel 30. The calendar on the city website lists the August 1st meeting as a special meeting. There was no video recording of either the August 2nd or August 1st or August 8th parts of the August 1st special meeting on the downtown development. Although more than 300 people attended the meeting, the public at large was not able to watch the meeting live or by video. Contrary to usual practice, the minutes did not give a brief summary of the comments by the 97 individuals who spoke. An overwhelming majority spoke against the Lennar downtown development proposal. City staff told me that some of the equipment was broken, but the council comments were able to be recorded on both days. The city knew that a vote would be likely. Because of the July 25th meeting, Warner specifically asked staff whether a vote could take place at the special meeting. The answer was yes. I wanted to check in the minutes the accuracy of the Spodowski-Werner motion to reduce housing units in the downtown development, a motion that was rejected by the other three council members. But since there was no video recorded, I could not verify the correctness of the motion. The audio recording of the meeting was not available online, so I made an appointment to listen to the audiotape. The city clerk and I listened to the recording of the Spodowski-Werner motion of August 8th twice. The minutes are incorrect. The minutes report that the motion directed Lennar to reduce the number of housing units by half. That would have meant that they would be cut from 260 units to exactly 130 units, an inappropriately precise number. The actual motion directed Lennar formally to reduce the number of units to half or less. In other words, a range from 0 to 130, a reasonable request. This follows months of citizen requests for reduced housing in the center of our downtown and in their place at Greentown Square. So far, the council majority talks about studies, studies that will take us past the November 8th election date. However, they have made no commitment to lower the housing or increase the open space. They have had months to do so. Instead, they have ignored the city's longstanding video policy. In doing so, they are limiting the impact of the overwhelming public rejection of the proposed downtown development plan. It is the council's right and responsibility to ensure that the minutes, the only public record of the meeting, are correct. I'm asking council members to correct the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Tom Jefferson, David Rounds, Dave McGuigan.
My name is Tom Jefferson. I hadn't planned to come here tonight because I was working on my gutters for the next rain, so it doesn't overflow again. I'm beat, just awful. And the only reason I came is because I received this slick mailer, slick mailer in the mail today. This is a mailer that supports Gary and Turner. That's not very disturbing or interesting. I mean, that's expected. But what is disturbing to me is that this mailer came from someone who's paid for by Livermore Forward with an FPPC number, Fair Political Practice Commission number on it. That's not so maybe unusual, big news, but what is disturbing is the address. 20 Galley Drive, Suite A, Nevado, California. Somebody is trying to buy our election, somebody outside Livermore. Imagine if Dublin wanted to buy our elections, or Pleasanton. So who is this? Livermore Forward? Well, unfortunately, or fortunately for us, they have to give their address. The address in Nevado, and Google is very good at this, it turns out the address is from a company, Warren and Associates, LLC. They work for many other people, too. I'm not saying they're working for Turner or Gary, but they do work for other things. They have a list of current and past clients. One of them is Gavin Newsom for Governor. Another, Ash Calra for State Assembly. You know, you're still thinking, why is somebody from Nevado funding this? Paying for this? What is... Oh, one of the other clients is Lennar. What a surprise. The developer that you people chose to develop our downtown, put in the 260 housing units you just heard. And surprise to the people who didn't want to vote for reducing the number of housing units below, from 130 or lower, Turner and Gary. What a surprise. Now, here's this outside entity trying to influence our election outside Livermore. Could it get worse? Yes, it could. Turns out, on May 12th, the East Bay Times had this article, "Conquered Naval Weapons Station: Key Events in Drawn-Out Development. Lennar Selected His Developer." However, on October 6th, 2015, and our city attorney might want to keep this in mind, city attorney Mark Coon jumped to his death from the third floor of a downtown Walnut Creek parking garage. That's in one of the... If you go onto, online and search for that, you'll find it on the East Bay Times. So this is just awful to have somebody from Nevado try to buy our election.
I absolutely agree. I have no idea who sent that, and for the record, I have never voted for the Lennar development. Please get your facts straight.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. David Rounds, David McGuigan, Roger Birdssaw.
This will be a little bit of a repeat from the previous speaker. Thank you for the time, as always, to speak to the council. I have a question for Vice Mayor Gary and Councilperson Turner. And it's a little convoluted, so I want to give some background. And I like to say right off the bat, I'm not an expert on campaign finance, and I do, and I don't believe that anybody has done anything wrong. However, I received the same mailer that was mentioned, supporting Stu and Loreen, that was paid for by Livermore Forward. And that's fine. I mean, some of your opponents in this election have a PAC, and you certainly should be able to have your own PAC also. Livermore Forward is working with a campaign accounting company, Warren and Associates in Nevado, and that's also fine. The FPPC rules are so convoluted that if you don't have somebody like Warren and Associates working with you, you'll get in trouble. What caught my attention is that one of the many, many clients of Warren and Associates is Lennar. And that was interesting because Lennar was in the past accused of inappropriately lobbying and donating to local politicians that are considering development issues that involve Lennar. That happened most recently in Concord, prior to the city council vote to pick the developer of the $6 billion development of the former naval weapons station. Partners who worked with Lennar made donations to the former mayor of Concord, Tim Grayson's State Assembly campaign, prior to the vote on the development. Ultimately, when this information became public, Grayson and other council member, and another council member recused themselves from the final vote on picking the developer for the naval weapons station project, due to the perception that there was a conflict of interest. So, back to Livermore. I do not know if Lennar, or partners of Lennar, contributed to the Livermore Forward Committee. The flyer in question went out after this month's deadline for the reporting of contributions, so right now, there's no information on the state website. It is very probable that Vice Mayor Gary and Councilperson Turner don't know either. That is the nature of how PACs work. My question, though, is that will you two recuse yourselves from any vote involving Lennar if it turns out that Lennar or their business partners had some financial relationship with Livermore Forward, assuming, of course, that you win the coming election? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rounds. Dave McGuigan, Roger Birdssaw, Alan Burnham.
Dave McGuigan, Ontario Drive. A little bit of detour tonight. I have to ask you, Mayor, was it just out of curiosity that you asked what the charge against me was? Just what does the charge have to do with my complaint that the police deliberately committing perjury and manipulating evidence? I'm curious, do you support lying by the police on some charges only, or is it a blanket support? Or is it yet another example of this council's utter disregard for the concerns of the citizens of Livermore? This council is known for silence in the opinions of those who disagree. You and Vice Mayor Gary removed an Agenda Item, prevent comment. Legal? Not really the point, when we're given the intent. Mayor Marchand had a gleeful time deriding someone's comment on Metro B tax costs, claiming people would have to spend 475K. Really should add your facts straight there, Mayor. Or how about when Councilwoman Turner went on to several-minute cross-examine to make prove a person making a comment about the downtown, or the new council chambers shouldn't even be there? And of course, we had the recent tirade on the evils of Cleveland made by Mayor Marchand after someone was, had the audacity to say that Cleveland did something okay with their downtown. This council's disdain was made very clear with the approval of the abortion of a downtown project, and has brought you so much deserved political outrage. You don't have to agree with the people speaking. You don't even have to believe them. But you do have a responsibility to respect them. After all, you do work for us. You may have noticed I have avoided using the term "your honor." For, for me, that is a term of respect. Respect you have not earned. Perhaps if you're more concerned with the people of Livermore, you could provide more leadership than platitudes. As you are known to say, Livermore deserves better. And now, back to the original topic. Now, the chief felt compelled to speculate on my motivation. He said, and I quote, "You're just trying to get your case reopened. You should just take responsibility for your actions." That's a problem with people today. They just don't take responsibility for actions. My question for the chief is, just what actions should I take responsibility for? The ones that actually happen, or the ones your office... The ones that actually happened, or the ones your officer lied and manipulated the evidence to bring charges for? Because I'm not really happy about being forced to accept the latter. I have a message for the chief. You've accepted a report with known factual errors when the report found the officer didn't test about how far my vehicle was when he started running. You accepted lying under oath as okay because it was an accident. You accepted an outrageous timeline of your officer knowing full well it is not reasonable for him to not engage me for 40 minutes, not reasonable to complete a full statement in six minutes, and not reasonable there would not be a documented witness statement. By actively denying the facts, you have engaged in conspiracy after the fact to conceal perjury. Perhaps it is you who should accept the responsibility for your actions. Given the statistics for Livermore Police Complaints for the last two years, in 2014, there were 13 complaints, of two of which were determined to be unfounded. In 2015, there were 12 complaints, nine of which were determined to be unfounded. I guess I'm one of the nine. I'm wondering if the others got the same details in their investigation. Seems like the standards of investigation have eased.
Thank you, Mr. McGuigan. And just to answer your question, after four months, I still had no idea what the ultimate point of your comments were, so that's why I asked. So, thank you. It was out of curiosity.
Lying and manipulation and evidence is wrong. That's what the point is.
Thank you, Mr. McGuigan. Roger Birdsall, Alan Burnham, Anthony Rangel.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Roger Birdsall. I'm the president of the Tracy Consortium for Higher Education, and I'm here tonight to kind of inform most of you and maybe update a few of you on our university that has opened up in Tracy. Notre Dame de Moore out of Belmont, which is the third oldest university in California dating back to 1851, has opened up a Tracy campus. And at this time, we are offering degree completions in a BA degree. You would have to have two years of college, or in the case of a lot of your students over here at the junior college, to get it. And we're offering an MBA. Also at this time, I am happy to say that we are talking with an individual who are trying to put together a 100-acre land deal for the campus to be built. And our hopes is eventually having the university in Tracy, but now, we do have a satellite there. There is an open house Wednesday this week, and then in two weeks, on November 9th at 6:30, for anyone who'd be interested, to talk to the staff and some of the administrators. We, our group, brought the university to Tracy, and we have also just put up over $100,000 for scholarships that are being offered. And at this time, with your consent, I would like to leave a few of the flyers with your clerk for anyone in the city who might have an interest in attending.
Is there a website where they can get more information?
I think it's on here.
Okay, would you like to read it for the camera?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead and read it, and that way the at-home audience can get that as well.
It's tracy.nnu.edu.
Very good. Thank you. You give those to the city clerk?
And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alan Burnham, Anthony Rangel, and Rakesh Patel.
Good evening. I'm here to talk mostly about a later agenda item, but recent events have encouraged me to talk on a couple other things. First of all, I would like to thank you for your public service. I'm sure you all earn a lesson minimum wage for what you're doing. Secondly, I would like to express some dismay about how I'm concerned about in the political process when disagreements too often become too personal. And we may or may not agree on what the downtown should look like. I personally don't like the Lennar plan, but I hope we can actually work together in some sort of a civil way to actually come up with something that will work for Livermore. Last week, I talked to you about my concern about Livermore's endorsement of the Zone 7 change in rate structures. I wasn't going to say anything, except for I got a message from Zone 7 this afternoon saying they passed their new rate structure, but don't worry, it's not going to change the water bills for the residential and commercial people. I think that's a false statement. I believe Proposition 218 will require all the municipalities to change their water rate structure. It depends on how the flat fee is passed through, but I think in general, what it's going to cause is a flattening of the rates. People who are low water users are going to pay more, and people who are high water users are going to pay less. And on average, you know, if you're the average user, it may not affect you, but I believe that this is going to happen, and I hope that the city is able to come up with a plan which is both fair as well as legal. You hopefully know the San Juan Capistrano case, where they had to refund millions of dollars by having too steeply of a tiered water structure. And although we get our water from Cal Water rather than Livermore, I would certainly hope that the Livermore city would not put in a structure which puts all of the city of Livermore at risk, like San Juan Capistrano, by putting in a rate structure which is subsequently found to be illegal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burnham. Anthony Rangel, Rakesh Patel, County Cops.
Good evening, council and staff. I'm here to actually invite all of you to a fundraiser tomorrow night at Panera Bread's in Fallon Gateway in Dublin. They are going to be raising money to help support the national mission of Grow for Vets USA to save the more than 50 U.S. veterans that die every single day from prescription drug overdoses and suicide. I have brought some flyers, so that way you can all, you know, have the address and the exact times of the events. I would also like to take a second and thank Councilmember Turner and Councilmember Gary for your continued support of our mission. This is not a mission that is taken easily across the country. You know, we've had discussions with representatives in DC, from Texas, Missouri, Mississippi, all over the country, places that are not canvas-friendly. But one thing that they do all recognize is that, right now, as it stands today, prescribed as-use prescription drugs are the fourth most serious health risk, killing as many people as stroke out of 180,000 people per year in the U.S. alone. On top of that, the same statistic of as-prescribed use prescription drugs also hospitalizes 2.7 million Americans on average. You guys are taking a really, really big step, both politically and for the communities, to help people actually live a life. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Rangel, is there a website that people can get more information about your fundraiser tomorrow night?
Yes. All of the information can be found on our national website, which is www.growforvets.org.
Okay, thank you. If you could give those to the city clerk?
Rangel, it's "grow" with a number four. Vets, or "F O R." Yeah. It was four, but...
Thank you. Rakesh Patel, County Cops, Jeff Caskey.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff. Thank you. My name is Rakesh Patel. I'm a principal with Presidio Companies, a selected hotel developer for the downtown development. I wanted to take a moment to address a few things publicly about where we are with the process and to address some of the comments that we heard tonight. First of all, we as a company and I remain very excited about downtown and our development, and we are moving full speed ahead with the pre-development phase and the planning phase, and continue to talk with the brand on a weekly basis to make sure this project gets where it needs to be. We've heard some of the community discussion about the I Street Garage, and we believe the I Street Garage would be beneficial to our project, as well as relieving some of the downtown demand from the site. So we hope the council moves forward with that analysis. And, you know, we think the market right now is still prime for hotel development. Ground-up hotel development is frankly the most difficult to get financed, and we think the market still would support a financing of this development, and we're ready to go. So we're hoping we can do that. The real reason I'm here today is to address a few things that were said in a previous city council meeting regarding myself and our company and the community group that's opposing the development. We have not discussed anything with the community group regarding hotel on the east side, on the west side, sorry. Whatever's being said by the community group regarding who we've spoken to or talked to is false. We have an exclusive negotiating agreement with the city, and we remain committed to talking only with the city. That is our obligation, and until the city tells us otherwise, we won't be doing that. And frankly, I'm 36 years old, and I was born here in San Francisco, and I've been an observer of government and the local process for quite some time. And I'm frankly appalled that anybody can say anything publicly that is false regarding ourself and our development without being checked on that. So I'm here today. I drove here from San Francisco just to make that very clear. Thank you.
Mr. Patel, thank you. So what you're saying is that the Presidio Group is not negotiating with the community group?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And which side do you prefer to put the hotel?
The east side is superior in every respect, based on our analysis, every respect. And I'm happy to talk to anybody about that on a one-on-one basis, or again, publicly at a city council.
Mr. Patel, thank you for coming out, and thank you for clarifying those points. I appreciate that. County Cops, Jeff Caskey.
Hi, County Cops, Springtown. I'm just going to say Springtown so it doesn't get too out of whack here. So I was here at a prior meeting, and I didn't get in the last words, and I don't have to, but I am really concerned about the deed that he made reference to at the end of the meeting, that you did have a deed that was the record that you were relying on for the ownership of the golf course as it stands in the map for Measure FF. The map that's in the ballot measure that includes the Springtown parcel. You have a deed for that map, that part of the golf course?
Go ahead and finish your comments.
Okay. Well, I'm trying to clarify something from, like, you know, well, okay, I'll go on here. So at the last meeting I spoke at, I want a clarification of the boundaries of what the Springtown Golf Course was. In my mind, I look at some of the parcel maps, and I do a little studying on this, and I'm confused. The more I look at documents and that, the more confused I get. Measure FF, there is a map on the ballot that was not actually included in the packet when you were deciding to go forward and put a measure on the ballot, which was Measure FF, to try to, like, re-adopt, reaffirm, renew the vows of Springtown and the city. And then, at that time, it also excludes the parcel for the Springtown Association and the parcel for the library. So I'm trying to make sense of that whole measure. It makes no sense to me reading it, and I know what you say, what you said it meant last time. It doesn't seem to match the read of it, and that's troubling to me. What I want to know also is, there's property that kind of flips. You'll see it on, like, page 849 of your other issue. When you look at your urban growth boundary map, you'll see the golf course. And above that, the streets outlining it would be Raymond, and then, you know, where Lorraine comes out to North Livermore, there is, I think, 300 acres that are city-owned. And I'm wondering how that 300 acres came to be, because it is adjacent to the actual reported golf course, the map of the golf course. But the golf course as is, I'm wondering if that was the original golf course that was actually taken in 1970, whatever, IC 71, the deed says 73. So I'm really confused as to the facts as you believe them for Springtown, and I'd like some confirmation on that.
Thank you, Ms. Cops.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, just a comment then on the deed, and was the 300 acres originally part of another golf course, or the original golf course?
I don't have the answer to that particular question. That wasn't part of the direction I was given to research for the measure. What we received is a title report for those lands that have been operated as the golf course, and those were included within the measure.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
And did you verify that the property that was on the map, Jason, was actually part of that deed? Like, did you do a survey, or did you just read the survey and understand it? Like, most people I talked to don't. They say they would need a survey to understand it.
Okay, just last question.
A title report was prepared by a title company that actually researches the county records to determine the meets and bounds for the various lots out there. And that's what was relied upon by staff when preparing this measure and bringing this matter forward to the city council.
And this is placed on the ballot as to preserve this as open space?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jeff Caskey.
Mayor and council, good evening. Jeff Caskey, and I'm here as the president of the Livermore Heritage Guild. We operate your Hegeman Ranch over on the west side of town, and I'm here to invite you and the public, let you know about our October 30th event, Halloween at Hegeman. We are trying to now open the site to the public once a month. December will be out, since that will also be Christmas, and sorry about that. But, so this is in follow-up to the previous open house we have that was so positively received. If you show up on October 30th and bring your kids between 1 and 4, we will have hay rides, games, ghost stories, they can meet Roxy the Goat, and my favorite horse, which is Raynor, and the others, who are probably going to be more social to the rest of you. I also wanted to give a shout-out. Jeff Schaefer happens to be here. His crew has been out with volunteers to help on the site. We've been heavily engaged in preservation at the site, and if you're out, you'll get to see some of the preservation work in progress there. We have the 1920-ish garage suspended in air at the moment, as the foundation is being resurrected by hand. It's at 455 Olivina. Our website is livermorehistory.com. Again, I invite you, I invite the public. It's free of charge. Show up, come in and check out this really incredible piece of Livermore heritage. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Just a quick thing, Mr. Caskey. Can you send, if you're interested in this, can you send something to Ms. Ponto, who would then send it out via the cities next door, so that she can advertise this event? I think it's fantastic.
I would be delighted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the Citizens Forum. Moving on to the consent calendar. Does anybody wish to remove anything from this consent calendar for discussion?
I'd like to consider item 4.02 separately, please.
Okay, very good. 4.02. These are typically routine items that are passed with a single motion. Is there a motion for this consent calendar? 4.1 through 4.07? 4.01 to 4.07, with 4.02 polled for discussion?
So moved.
Okay. Moved and seconded. On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. 4.02. Councilmember Turner?
I would like to abstain on this matter.
You'd like to abstain on this? All right. So a motion on 4.02?
So moved.
So moved. Seconded. Any discussion on the motion? On favor, same party saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show that Councilmember Turner abstained. Certainly. Okay, I'm going to do a slight reorder of the agenda here, because there are some items that are fairly routine and ministerial in nature. I'd like to, just, this is kind of a heads-up for a little bit later. Okay, that's all right. That's good. You make sure that I don't go running off somewhere and, you know... Okay, so what I would like to do is, we're going to go through the public hearings first, and then when we go to matters for consideration, I'm just going to give you guys all a heads-up. I would like to do 4.04, excuse me, 6.04, 6.05, and 6.06. These should be fairly quick, and so we don't have staff that has to stay here for hours on end, so these should be done pretty quickly. And then we'll do 6.04, 05, 06, and then move on to 6.01, 02, and 03. Okay, is that clear? All right, then. Moving on to 5.01, we're in the public hearings. This is the project known as Brighton Old Town Village, the old first street right-of-way, and the conveyance of a city-owned parcel. We have Scott Lee, as our senior planner, is going to be taking the lead on this. And this is really straightforward, right? It's not at all convoluted?
Yes, that's accurate, Mayor Marchand, members of the council. This next phase of Brighton consists of three separate sets of applications, and as you can tell, they're all interrelated. And as you can tell, they're all interrelated. Can we get to the next slide, please? Looking for the clicker to move forward the slide.
Weave your hand and Neil can advance as you go.
Next slide, please?
Oh, there we go.
Okay. Thanks so much. Okay. Just a brief background. This drawing shows the first two phases of Brighton. So, you have First Street. And then, the first phase consists of 94 units. And then, the second phase consisted of 10 more units at the east end. And these phases are under construction and actually nearly complete. As you can see, there's a gap on the north side, which consists of four different parcels. And those were a little more difficult to assemble since they're developed and were actively used when the first two phases were approved. So, at one point, the applicant had all four parcels under contract and brought forth an application to develop 35 lots to fill in that gap as a continuation of Brighton. But since then, and this was a project that was approved by council back in 2014. But since then, one of the property owners changed his mind. Specifically, it's the property owner of the swim school and they've decided to keep their swim school at that location and not participate in the redevelopment. So, the applicant had to revise the maps. And this next slide shows the resulting map. This space is where the swim school is located. And as you can see, it's very similar to what's already developed around it in Phase 1. All the lots are the same size or similar in size and the same house models will be constructed for this next phase. So, it's essentially a continuation of the existing Brighton project. This project meets all applicable standards of the downtown specific plan, including the density requirements. And this next slide shows, just hypothetically, how the swim school parcel could be developed in the future when the property owner is ready to move forward with redevelopment. And what that shows are six or nine additional lots that would integrate with the rest of Brighton. And the point of the slide is that one could develop that parcel in the future in an orderly fashion that integrates with Brighton. So, we have nine lots plus some open space that would connect to the existing park to the south. So, here's a close-up of one of the maps that shows seven lots on the west side of the project site, plus, these are all side entry units. And then, you have two additional guest parking spaces and a green space that also serves as a stormwater retention area. And then, on the east side, you have 17 additional lots with three additional guest parking spaces, some common open space for the residents. And then, this slide shows how it's a fencing plan. As you may know, those four parcels are enclosed by an existing fence. And what the applicant will do is remove sections of the fence, like here, where this existing street currently dead ends, and it'll connect with this proposed alley that serves the new lots. And then, there's a little pocket park in Phase 1 and the fence will be taken down as well as along portions of this existing park to the south. So, there will be a visual connection as well as pedestrian connections between the proposed phase and the existing development. So, there will be a flow between these phases of Brighton. Two major benefits of this project include the replacement of this car wash, which is an incompatible use next to the existing residential. And so, houses will be developed instead of having a car wash at that location. And then, the second major benefit is the construction of a sound wall along the railroad. And currently, the, well, the current phases of Brighton were approved with a sound wall along Old First Street. But since then, the applicant has acquired an easement along this private parcel to build a sound wall. So, that will allow for a more integrated neighborhood on the south side of the railroad. And this is a photograph of what that sound wall will look like. And then, finally, the approval of the project incorporates vacating a portion of the Old First Street right-of-way, which is shown in the red. Its excess right-of-way, the remaining portion of Old First Street will still be wide enough to accommodate two travel lanes, plus parking on both sides of the road. And then, there's also a small 1,200 square foot city-owned parcel next to the railroad, which staff is recommending to be conveyed for this development. So, in conclusion, staff is recommending that the city council take three separate actions, approving track map 8184, 8173, and 8305 with the respective downtown design review application, and direct staff to file a notice of exemption for each project to meet sequel requirements. So, that concludes staff's presentation and we're available for any questions.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Turner?
Yeah, I do have a question, either for you or the applicant, I'm not sure. When we saw this a little while ago, there was some specific mitigation put in place for the car wash, that I'm assuming we're no longer doing. Are we doing anything to mitigate for the sound from the swim school or do we need to? What considerations have been put into the plan for that, since we now have a project going around the swim school?
Right. So, there are conditions of approval to provide, or to build a double-walled fence on the west side of the swim school, because of where the parking lot is located. And then, there's an existing, I think it's a concrete wall on the east side. And for aesthetic reasons, there's a condition to place, to replace it with a wood fence or if the swim school owner doesn't participate, put a wood fence next to the existing concrete wall. But sound isn't an issue, so there's no sound mitigation.
Screaming kids in swim lessons can be noisy.
Right.
But that's, your residents might not like that as much as they would have liked the, oh, that's true.
It's inside the building is why that's not a major consideration.
Well, there we go. And then, what about egress from that building? Because it wasn't a consideration before. We have no concerns there. They just egress straight onto Old First, correct?
That's correct.
Councilwoman Spodowski?
Yeah. My daughter went there many years ago. Could you bring up the slide, the sound wall slide again? A couple comments. I've seen this project since Phase 1 when I was on the planning commission and, you know, it's really unfortunate that it's going through these multiple phases, you know, with the property sales and the ownership. I think what we originally saw when the entire property was developed, the flow was better. Although, I do say, you know, I have to say, a good job on eliminating those where it says Phase 3 eliminated wall. I believe that was Commissioner Caskey's comment when we first saw it, that there were sound walls all along First Street. And I know staff and the applicant worked with the neighboring property owners to get that sound wall to continue down along the tracks. So, I think that's a huge improvement. But, could you just briefly kind of outline where, again, the wood fence would be and the access to the swim school? I guess the swim school will be completely fenced off on all three sides, but you said that there might be a wood fence up against? I'm a little confused with where, you know, what kind of fencing and where that's proposed around that square.
Right. So, this is the swim school parcel.
Right.
And there's a concrete fence here. And I believe there's a wood fence here that'll be replaced with a double-walled fence, just to provide extra buffer between the parking lot and the adjacent residences that are planned here. There's a concrete wall on this side of the swim school. And that'll be either replaced with a wood, double-walled wood fence, or there will be a single wood, if, or if the property owner doesn't cooperate, the applicant will install a wood, just a single walled fence next to the existing wall.
Okay. It's just unfortunate there can't be more access or if they're not selling, you know, turned into some kind of pseudo-community pool. You know, it's just, I don't know. Again, it's, you know, I wish it went a different way, but I understand where you are now. So, thank you.
There was some, in the fairly recent past, there was some additional legislation passed, which, as I recall, made it easier to set up railroad quiet zones. Okay, somebody's nodding their head, so I'm not too far off base. So, there was something about that, because I know there's been some question about setting up a quiet zone in this area. And there is recent legislation which, at least, simplifies the process.
Yes, there are a number of steps that you have to go through to establish a quiet zone, but there was some legislation, I think, passed within the last year or so that clarifies that a little bit.
Okay. All right, good. Just wanted to make that point. Okay. Any further questions? All right. I have three speaker cards. Yoel Grant, John Stein, and Suzanne Olivera. Mr. Grant?
I am a resident of the current development of Brighton. I've moved in at the end of February, so been there under a year. And I can say that in my adult life, this neighborhood, I know more of my neighbors in this neighborhood than I've known in anywhere I've lived. And I, my career has me move about every five years or so. So, it's a very cohesive neighborhood. We had a neighborhood barbecue, just to kind of get everyone out and everyone introduced. We instituted a neighborhood watch. And I believe that the development of the adjacent parcels into the additional homes will allow that corner, which is a dead-end road up against train tracks. So, you can imagine just kind of what may occur or could occur back there, especially since there's a car wash the same distance westbound on Old First that it is eastbound from our back entrance to the community, which is where I live. So, the additional car wash is underutilized and doesn't really suit, you know, the highest and best use of that parcel back there. The buildings that are currently there, I know there was some previous discussion of the, you know, the layout and the side entries and, you know, passeos. It works. It's a beautiful layout and I believe that it should be continued and that will serve the downtown Livermore area as well as our neighborhood as best it can. And the swim school makes a much better neighbor than what is currently abutting our property beside the swim school. So, I believe that, I would hope that you would consider to allow this plan to progress.
Mr. Grant, thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Glad you like the neighborhood.
Thank you.
John Stein, Suzanne Olivera. Mr. Stein?
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. A few questions. The first one is, even if there's not a quiet zone, what are the long-term plans for an underpass on Junction and Old First? Second question is, what impact will the sound wall have in reflecting the air horns to the north? And the third question is, has the city decided on developing a space either along First Street or some other location for auto-related uses as they're displaced from the downtown? There are a number of inspection stations, transmission shops, speedy lube, the car wash that are important to those of us who live in town. I go to the car wash fairly often and I was wondering where they'll be relocated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Mr. Lee?
I can...
Moving those uses?
Yes. So, there are commercial, appropriate commercial service zones in other parts of the city where a car wash or auto-related uses could move into. And we've had a few relocated to those areas. So, there are potential locations that are more appropriate for these type of uses. With respect to the sound, there have been, it's been looked at by acoustical engineers and the reflection coming off the wall on the other side increases the sound by like one or two decibels. So, it's rather negligible as far as the impact of sound reflection on the other side of the railroad track.
And do we provide some sort of technical assistance if a business owner would ask our planning department or engineering where they'd be able to move their business? We can assist them with that?
Yes, we have in the past and we'd be happy to assist any business owner looking for the correct zoning for their, for their use.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Finally, Suzanne Olivera.
Good evening, council. My name is Suzanne Olivera. I live in the Brighton Development. I was told when I very first purchased my home back in July of 2015 that this property would be developed to similar homes just like ours. I live in the very back end. Can you change the slide? Okay. My backyard actually backs up to the car wash. It's very noisy. There's a lot of stuff going on in the back that should not be going on. There's a lot of homeless people that are hanging out back there. There's a lot of theft and crime. It's really scary. The first weekend I moved here, I had somebody in my backyard. I don't, can't tell you how many times I've had to call the police to get someone out there because there's stuff going on. I would hope that you guys would take into consideration us as residents of the community to get this developed so that we don't have to live like that anymore. We've already instituted a neighborhood watch group. Seems to be working, but we need the car wash gone. Thank you.
Okay. So, you're in favor of this? Thank you. That's, that's all the cards that I have. So, I'm going to close the public hearing. And any, any further questions from the council? Any discussion?
I'll move approval.
Okay. Have a motion? Councilmember Turner?
We need separate motions for everything you're looking for.
Do you need three separate motions or can we do it as a single?
No, there are three separate resolutions, but they can be moved concurrently. And that's why we're taking this motion by Councilwoman Turner right now.
Okay. So, that was your intent, to move all three at the same time?
All seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Werner. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signifiably saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? It passed unanimously. Thank you.
This is the final phase, I promise.
No, and thank you for working on it, because I know you really worked on making this work. And also, I wanted to thank the planning commission and staff, because I know it's been a lot of back and forth.
They've done a great job.
Yeah. Just read the minutes and you get the full story.
Yep. Thanks.
I would just say, I would say it's heartening to see the residents like it and want this to continue.
And they like the neighborhood, so that's great. Good job. Okay, 5.02. This is a hearing to increase the affordable housing in Lufee. So, Susan Calkins and Eric Uringa. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name's Susan Calkins, administrative, sorry. I was administrative assistants for the Housing and Human Services Division of Community Development Department. The affordable income limits, for sale prices, rental rates in Lufee are adopted annually by council per the Affordable Housing Ordinance and are used for the city's affordable housing programs. The maximum income limits are based on the median income of a four-person household in Alameda County. They're derived from... They are derived from the data published annually by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Adjustments are made then by, made to the below-market rate for sale prices and rental rates using a common calculation mythology where a household would spend no more than 30% of their income for housing. Income limits for sale prices and rental rates for the 2016 have increased slightly over 2015. Staff proposes an increase to the affordable housing in lieu fee from $11.65 to $19.95 per square foot. In 2010, the fee was reduced to $23,299 per unit from its peak of $39,534 in 2007, which was due to the downturn in the market. At that time, a developer of a small thousand-square-foot residential unit would pay the same fee as one building a 5,000-square-foot unit, thus incentivizing the development of larger units over smaller units. To resolve the inequity, in December 2013, council approved changing the fee to a per square foot fee of $11.65. The per-square-foot fee is calculated by using the difference between the current development cost and the proposed affordable for-sale prices. Under the current 2015 fee amount, a developer who is allowed to pay the in-lie fee instead of building an affordable unit on-site pays approximately one-half of what it would cost a developer who is required to build the unit in their project. The proposed fee generally reflects the increase over the 2010 home prices. Staff is recommending approval of the 2016 affordable income limits for sale prices, rental rates, and in-lie fee, and is available for questions.
Questions, staff? Vice Mayor.
In the staff report, you mentioned the changing in 60 days. Would you explain the process and how this affects those already underway, under application, and why this is only a 60-day period?
Well, the 60-day period is what is the normal period of time for something like this to become, come into effect. It's a 60-day period. We chose not to extend it out further because of the, because the new fee would currently reflect the prices that are out there now, and delaying it further would prolong that inequity.
I would also add that anybody that has an entitlement already can pay their building, can pay their affordable housing fees in advance, so anybody that's already entitled could go ahead and sort of prepay those fees, even if they might ordinarily pay them a little later with the building permit.
And if this were to pass tonight, will they be noticed tomorrow if we're otherwise aware of them at their, at some various part in the pipeline?
We, as part of our outreach with this, we've met with every developer who has a project in the pipeline, and relayed that message to them already.
Okay. Second question, one I'd asked staff just earlier today. Could you briefly go into the logic of why this large increase, which is admittedly a catch-up, caused by the Great Recession, wasn't phased over a longer period of time?
Well, primarily because a number of things was happening. First of all, in order, we switched over to per-square-foot fee over our per-unit fee, and that required a nexus study to be done, and that, that took some time. In addition, we also, you know, went through the process of, you know, I guess, there's just programs in place at the time that lowered the fee to what it is, and we had to wait for those incentives to expire. And the third part was, quite frankly, we were caught unexpected by the sudden increase in, in the raising, rise in housing prices. And I think those things coupled together led to the large increase in what we're asking for right now.
And finally, the fee, you have a must-build requirement in your ordinance, so most folks who actually build larger projects actually build the units, and that is the requirement, that's the default. This fee is used where there would be a fraction of a unit and is meant to be revenue-neutral, because essentially, the market has already increased the cost of your must-build, so that's happened, independent of what you do tonight. All you're doing is squaring up those who pay the fee with what's already happened in the marketplace. So it's, this is meant to keep the playing field level in that sort of a way, and the largest reason is the market has recovered extraordinarily strongly in the past 36 months, and that's essentially what you're seeing, and that fee is particularly sensitive to that, because essentially, once you have a base of a certain level, increases on top of that create a very large percentage increase.
I might add too that the fee goes up when prices go up, but it also has in the past gone down when prices go down, so the fee adjusts according to the market prices.
Questions? So for a 2,000-square-foot house, it's roughly a $40,000 fee. Does that then make that, if that's added to the cost of the house, does that decrease the affordability then for another section of the population?
Question of essentially what happens to home prices is one, there's actually a study of, a lot of academic research on that. So it's a very long, tenuous thread. The bottom line is, development interests respond to the market. In other words, if the market will bear a certain price, that is the price which is charged. So therefore, a fee load is on the same side of the equation as land price. So if you increase your fees, you decrease the residual land value the developer is willing to pay a property owner in, in order to acquire the site. So essentially, it doesn't change the price of those particular houses being sold at that particular time. However, theoretically, on a region-wide basis, not on a local level like ours, on a region-wide basis, that can depress the amount of land which is available for housing production. However, in the Bay Area, it's not that trigger, which is actually the limiting factor. It's property which is appropriately zoned and then can easily be permitted for residential development, which is constraining, constraining the source. So while we do need to be careful about that over the long run, and there is some academic research that says in the abstract, inclusionary programs, which require a certain percentage of the units to be set aside as affordable, can have a very modest impact on housing supply. The much larger issue is community acceptance of the necessary amount of residential development throughout the region and even in our own community.
One of the things that when I, in talking to other folks from around the country, when I tell them the cost of housing in Livermore, their jaws drop and their eyes sort of glaze over. And when I also tell them the fees, and I believe if you total up all the park and school and everything else fees, it's around $150,000 per unit. This fee, is that included in the 150, or would this bump it to almost 190?
Again, you're, you, you don't actually have a fee, you don't have an impact fee here.
Right, right. It's an in-lie.
It's an in-lie fee, so you have the actual requirement on top of that, but this would be in addition to that number. So essentially, we would not be 150 plus that, but we would be above 150 for large, single-family detached homes. A number of our fees are per-square-foot basis, so if you built a 800-square-foot apartment unit, the fee load would be much, much less. And that's because the impacts of that much smaller, fewer bedrooms, fewer trips generation, fewer enterprise fund impacts. So our fees actually do run the gamut from just below 100,000 to above 150,000, depending on the size of the unit, and of course, housing prices range between 700,000 up to about 1.5, 1.6 million dollars, depending on the size of the house.
Yeah, that's one of the things I tell people, is when your land is two and a half million dollars an acre, and you've got another 150,000 in fees on that, you really can have anywhere from 500 to 700,000 before you put a stick on the property.
Your fees are generally about 15% of your total price, and it varies, depending on exactly the size of the unit where it's located.
And most of those fees aren't ours, they're the city's fees.
We also collect, obviously, regional fees, such as those for Zone 7, regional traffic fees, and a number of other things. Of course, we also collect fees for the Park District, which of course is an independent agency, the School District, which again is an independent agencies. All of those add, and it's mainly because, over time, the voters have determined that they would rather pay for their new infrastructure with essentially development than through taxes. That was a shift that happened, of course, we all know, beginning in the late 1970s. In the old days, we had a much higher general tax load, and those things were paid for out of those resources. That shift has happened over the past 40 years, as we've moved to have a lower general tax load and a higher impact fee load on development.
And the mantra became, development pays its own way. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. I have a, one card from Mike Sherpa.
So here comes the developer. You can, Mike Sherpa, I can say Old First Street, because I own property on Old First Street. So not going to go the direction you probably think I'm going to go, I'm not going to bash this completely, but there's a couple of points I think you need to think about. Higher fees absolutely mean higher prices. The way this is levied, it's a 70% increase. That's a massive hit. I can tell you from my project alone, I'm not sure how I can do it. I'm not sure, I don't even think I can do it. It's a big hit. For my product type, it's a lot of square footage, because I get up to 2,000 square feet, not a lot of land keeps the price down, right? If I had the same square footage three miles outside of town on a 6,000, 8,000-square-foot lot, well, it'd be a lot more expensive. So for my type of product where you have more square footage, little lot, and you keep the price down that way, it takes, it's a big impact. It's an inordinate imbalance sort of impact on, on my specific type, because it's, it's kind of like a townhome, really, but it's detached. So it makes it, it makes it hard to build it. So I would just say, think about it, you know, a 70%, 71% increase, all at one shot, is, is a lot. It's a lot. Now, if I were building 4,000-foot homes, and I'm selling them for a million and a half dollars, maybe I have more room in the model, but not when, when you have a product type like mine downtown. So I'm pleading my own case, but a 70% increase is a big hit, all at one time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherpa. Okay, that's all the cards I have, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Comments from the council? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move staff recommendations. But I will comment. I was very shocked at the significant doubling, tripling, whatever, of the fees. However, in reading back the details of how long the fee, and getting the fees to where they were from 2009, I do understand why we're doing this. And in essence, as much as, as I hate increasing fees, I do hope that this actually gets our developers to start building units instead of doing the fees, because we do need more housing, and I think that this might be adequate incentive to get developers thinking a lot more about building affordable housing instead of paying the fee, and that's my hope, and that is why I make this motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
We're playing microphone chicken here. I'll, I'll second it. There you go.
We're all going to have to vote on it eventually.
I'll second it, and I also.
Second by Councilmember Werner.
Yeah, and I also agree that we need to switch it from the fee to the actual building, because, you know, over the years, we've done all these projects, and people who question it and talk about it, they don't really understand that the developer has the option. And so now, we need to make the option, you know, neutral. We're not trying, we shouldn't be skewing it one way or the other.
Mr. Uranga, as I understand, some of the projects that we've been able to leverage some of these in-lie fees and actually create more housing, is that correct?
Yeah, well, we do use the fees to develop more housing at, in special user housing and housing at all income levels, so not, not just low or moderate, but all the way down to extremely low income.
But we can also, we can sometimes actually leverage to create more units?
Yes, because we can use outside sources and stuff to, outside resources and leverage our funds and, and use them to create even more units.
Okay, all right.
And just to clarify, we do have a must-build requirement, so.
Right.
The developer is required to build the majority of the units, but whether it's a fraction left over, that's the portion that they would pay the fee for.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Vice Mayor Gary.
This is incredibly complicated, and given the intent and the mechanics of it, the right thing to do is, is to pass this tonight. Having said that, I am concerned, over the 30-year arc of the total cost of city-imposed fees, and are we achieving the right economic outputs, which is diversity of housing? We did receive written correspondence today from several associations and individuals. Is the fee properly sized to different density and product types? So my request of my peers would be that, well, we should mechanically move ahead with the adjustment, and I'd vote for it. I'd like to have us have a discussion at some point about shaping with staff, maybe as part of the downtown specific plan update, looking at the intended output from this fee, and are we getting the as-built and the fractional dollars necessary? And is the fee doing unintended consequences, maybe to certain product types? So I think we've had this structure in place for a very long time, the marketplace is shifting, and I just think we could take a second look, forward-looking, and this can always be adjusted down the road if we find we're getting unintended consequences from carrying forward the legacy structure. So I just have some reservations here about, are we really going to get the outputs, the fee desires, five, 10 years from now?
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? It passes unanimously. Okay, so as I mentioned earlier, we're going to, since these are going to be fairly quick, move to 6.04, which is discussion in direction regarding amending a purchase and sale agreement with Brookfield Residential, formerly Dublin Crossing Ventures. This is regarding Burlwing Owl Habitat, for how you can sell land and still control it, which is pretty amazing to stop to think about it.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand, members of the city council. The proposal for you is to amend the existing agreement with Dublin Crossing Ventures, now Brookfield Residential, to sell a conservation easement on city-owned property in Doolin Canyon to satisfy Burlwing Owl mitigation requirements. The conservation easement will compensate for project impacts associated with their Dublin Crossings project. The Department of Fish and Wildlife is requiring additional vegetation management and the construction of ground squirrel burrows. These activities add additional construction and long-term management costs. We're recommending that the council adopt a resolution amending the agreement to require Brookfield to cover these increased costs. That concludes staff's presentation. We're available for any questions. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Questions for staff? Okay, you have a motion?
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
No tarweed on the site, correct?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Because I had a bit of a moment of panic earlier when Mr. Stein brought up the, the potential mitigation, and I thought, wait a, no, this isn't the project, so just.
What type of habitat?
Yeah, exactly, wrong one, exactly. Okay.
Okay, so with that, do we have a motion?
I'll move approval.
Okay, moved by Councilor Spadowski, seconded by Vice Mayor Gary. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Mr. Ross, Mr. Stewart, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the resolution of intent to establish City of Livermore Community Facilities District for Shea Properties. Mr. Lassio.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The item before you tonight is the first two steps in the process necessary to refinance previously issued Community Facilities District debt. So in 2006, under the provision of the Melrose Community Facilities Act of 1982, the city established the City of Livermore Community Facilities District Number 2006-1 Shea Properties in order to, and issued on behalf of the CFD a $10,000, $10 million worth of special tax bonds, which were used to finance public infrastructure in the area. The city now wishes to refinance the outstanding principal amount of the prior bonds in order to take advantage of the current low-interest rate environment, which will result in significant savings to the property owners located in the 2006 CFD. savings to the property owners located in the 2006 CFD. At the time, the 2006 CFD was initially established, the boundaries of the district included parcels which were expected to be developed with commercial uses, and the 2006 CFD was authorized to levy special taxes on commercial property. Since then, some of the properties have been developed with residential uses, and some of the property owners have expressed an interest in developing their properties for residential use. So in order to provide clarity and to simplify levy of special taxes for the refinancing of the prior bonds, staff is recommending forming 2016-2 CFD Shea Properties with the revised boundaries and clear tax structure. So the process going forward is that if you approve these two resolutions tonight, we'll hold a public hearing on November 28th, and unless there's protests by majority owners of a taxable property in the proposed CFD, the council may adopt resolutions forming the CFD at that time and declaring the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness and other debt to refinance the prior bonds. At that point, the council may adopt a resolution calling for an election of the qualified electors in the CFD and pose the question of levying special taxes and incurring indebtedness. The qualified electors will be landowners in the CFD because there are no registered voters within the boundaries. All of the landowners have, in the proposed CFD, have signed, agreed to waive the otherwise applicable election time periods and procedures as permitted by the Melrose Act, which means the election could be held immediately after adopting the resolution calling for the election. All right? So the ballots will be mailed or hand-delivered. The election requires a two-third vote, a favorable vote among the ballots received. At that point, the city would introduce an ordinance levying special taxes within the CFD, and then we'd be back to ask for resolution authorizing issuance of the bonds.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to recognize that Chris Lynch, our bond counsel with Jones Hall, is also present this evening, if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. All right, any questions for staff? Okay, very good.
I got a really quick one. I mean, you're always here saving us money. Now you're not even going to save us money, you're saving our taxpayers' money. How much are you going to save up, roughly?
Not sure yet. So we'll wait and see if we form the new district and if they vote in favor of this, and we'll run the numbers. So the city has a fiduciary responsibility to the owners of property within the CFD to get them the best available rate, so...
Well, I just love it when you come up here to save money for whomever it might be. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, very good. So I don't have any comment cards, so with that, well, of course, this isn't a hearing either. So any more questions? Is there a motion?
I'll also move.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Warner, seconded by Vice Mayor Gary. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Seeing none, it passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, and it's always good to save people money. And now moving to item 6.06, this is the modifying policies and procedures for out-of-area utility service agreements. Sherry Sheets, our city engineer.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and council members. Tonight, I'm asking you to consider two items. The first is to modify the city's out-of-area service agreement policies, and the second is to consider an out-of-area service agreement with Alameda County and East Bay Regional Parks District to deliver recycled water to Shadow Cliffs Park. In 1997, the city adopted a Resolution 97-1, which established policies and procedures for providing out-of-area sewer and water services to services outside our jurisdictional boundaries. Staff is proposing to update those policies to better be consistent with the city's current general plan policies and with the local area formation committee with Alameda County, as well as with our LAFCO agreement. Staff is also proposing some procedural modifications, but in the end, the city council will review all out-of-area service agreements, and in certain situations, LAFCO will be the final approval process. The city currently has twelve out-of-area service agreements for dealing with various public health and safety issues, and they're all generally compliant with the current policies. However, in two cases, the city has provided services outside of our jurisdictional boundaries. We've done that with the permission of the jurisdiction that would normally provide services there because it was determined to be more practical for us to do so. The current policies don't really contemplate us providing services outside of our jurisdiction, and so that is part of the reason we've made these modifications to the policies. Recently, Alameda County and East Bay Regional Parks District asked for us to serve them with recycled water, and it's for irrigation purposes only landscaping along Stanley Boulevard and then landscaping in Shadow Cliffs area. Staff has determined that these two requests conform with the proposed out-of-area service agreement policies, at least the ones we're proposing tonight. And LAFCO will not be involved in these because when we have public agency-to-public agency agreements, they don't get involved. Staff is therefore recommending that you adopt a resolution amending the, or I'm sorry, rescinding the old policies and approving the new policies, and then finally that you approve the new agreement. Staff's available for questions.
Questions for staff? Quick question, that's a long service line to Shadow Cliffs. Who pays for the installation and maintenance of that line?
Alameda County.
Okay, so we're not involved. Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll move all of staff's recommendations.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Turner.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Gary. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, so we are now at 6.01. What's the pleasure of the council? You guys want to take a five-minute break now? Or, okay, so we're going to take about, let's say, 10-minute break. We'll be back here at 10 minutes to nine. Okay, welcome back to Part Two of the Livermore City Council meeting of October 24th. We're now back in session, and now we are at item 6.01, matters for consideration. This is the reconsideration of the certificate of appropriateness for the former Wagner Winery Building. So we have Scott Lee and Frank Guido.
Mayor Marchand, before we begin today, I'd like to just make a statement for this particular item.
Which is your attorney?
Jason O'Call, your city attorney. As a matter of parliamentary procedure, this, based upon your local rules, your motion for reconsideration nullified your decision back in September 29th to approve the certificate appropriateness to demolish the Wagner Winery. As a result, this evening, the original matter is back before you, and may be discussed and debated as if it were on the floor for the first time. As a result, a new motion, new original motion is in order, and with that, I'll turn it over to staff for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and members of the council. Paul Spence, your community development director, I'm going to provide you with just a brief overview. So as you may recall, at your October 10th meeting, the council passed a motion to reconsider the council's September 26 action to approve a certificate of appropriateness for the demolition of the Wagner Winery Building. Staff report summarizes the background on this project and the actions taken to date. The Historic Preservation Commission and staff have recommended the council approve the certificate of appropriateness for this project. The basis of these recommendations is that the building, the Wagner Winery Building, has lost its ability to convey its historic nature because of advanced degradation of its materials, namely the brick, mortar, and roof of the building. More specifically, there's a two-part test referenced in the National Register Bulletin on how to apply the National Register criteria for evaluation. This approach is adopted by reference in the downtown specific plan. At issue is not the first part of the test, which is whether there is history associated with the site. In this case, the building was part of an early local winery, and the family was a well-regarded early Livermore family. At issue really is the second part of the test, which is whether the building is sufficiently intact to retain its historic integrity. So the Historic Preservation Commission conducted a site visit and held two public hearings on this item, and determined that due to its condition, the building has lost the physical ability to continue to convey its historic nature, and therefore does not qualify as a historic resource. So the council, we have three options that we've identified for your consideration in the staff report. The first is to find that the Wagner Winery is not a historic resource, based on the evidence presented, and that there is community benefit from the removal of an unsafe building, and to approve the certificate of appropriateness subject to conditions. So this was essentially your previous action. Modifications are possible. You could change the conditions of approval, add or amend them as you see fit. A second option identified is to deny the certificate of appropriateness, and that would deny the demolition request for the building. And then the third option is to require further evaluation. This could include environmental analysis, consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act. You could also ask for other types of analysis, such as a structural report or a more detailed historic analysis. You could ask that these things go back to the Historic Preservation Commission, or you could ask that they come back to the council. So these are all options available to you this evening. That includes staff's brief overview. I have project planners Frank Guido and Scott Lee here with us, and I'm also available to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions for staff at this point?
I have a question for staff, but if we have a question, can we ask you later on, Mr. Kaski? Perfect. I may have questions for you after I hear.
He's speaking.
Oh, he's speaking, perfect. Thank you.
Questions at this point? Okay, all right, we do have got a few cards. We have Nancy Bankhead, John Stein, Jason Bezis. Mr. Stein, you submitted two cards, just wanted, let's toss one. Okay, just really wanted to speak, though. Okay.
I thought some evidence, I'd like you guys...
Okay, if you could get that to City clerk.
I'm Nancy Bankhead, owner of the property. My family bought that property in 1953. If you ask the, well, it's going to, we shut it down in the 90s, somewhere in the 90s, because of the earthquake, not being able to retrofit it. If you ask most people in Livermore, they will tell you that's the Trading Post because it was an antique store for a long time. The barbers had it. The history of that property is kind of amazing. We had a feed store in there, and he had hay in there, and one morning, the building wasn't there anymore. So that was one building that went down. Another one was a cabinet shop in a tin building. It went down with a fire, too. Then the other building was a cement-walled one. It went down in five minutes with a permit, and we took that dirt or cement out to the ranch, and we put it on the back of our ranch going to our pond. We never got stuck on that road again because it was just, it was good. Gary Drummond told me a long time ago that Livermore did not know how to make the cement, the mortar, to keep the bricks together, and they left the clay in there. The clay disintegrated in a way that I just took a rock today, and I was able to go three-quarters, sand it with the rock, three-quarters of an inch, to get the mortar out of there. Unfortunately, the picture didn't turn out good, so I can't show you. But if you look at those pictures, that's not just a single-walled brick building. That is a double-walled building, and after so many feet, the bricks go this way. To re-mortar that is almost impossible. If you look at that one picture, I've got a yardstick in there, and it is somewhere around a 12-inch foundation that is crumbling. There's no way to pick up a brick building and redo the foundation. Every day that I don't get it down, a brick or something is disappearing in there. I can't close it because I've got other buildings that are locked, they're breaking the windows. It's a hazard. I need to get it out. So, thank you.
Thank you. John Stein, Jason Bezis, Jeff Kasky.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. There are a number of old buildings in the downtown, and they are what give the downtown its character. I read the engineering report, and I agree, I looked at the building. It would cost a lot more to restore that building than it would be to reconstruct the building of a similar shape and size using similar materials, red brick, corrugated roofing, or I don't know, maybe originally it had wooden shingles. And I would say that one of the things we need to do is preserve the appearance of the downtown and also make it difficult to remove historic buildings. So what I would suggest again is that as a condition of removal, when the site develops as either commercial or residential, there'd be a structure erected with a similar form using similar materials on the site of approximately a similar size that mirrors the building, much like the Ruby Hill Winery mirrors the building that was there that burned down in 1989. The adaptive reuse could be quite good, whether it was residential or commercial, could be a store. The window placements could be changed slightly. It should have a large door on the front. And any mitigation you do, whether it's a mural, which may last for five or 10 years, or a monument, which is sort of insignificant, should go with the land. I mean, if the land is sold, how do you ensure that the mitigation for removing the building continues with the land? So if a developer buys the land, can you require that they put brick facing on the buildings, or build a mural, or put up a monument, or as I suggested, replace the building with one of similar material size and shape? But I would say that that probably would make it significantly better than either a monument or a mural, and help, you know, create the ambiance that makes our downtown successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Jason Bezis, Jeff Kasky, Malcolm Leader-Pacon.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and council. I'd like to thank you, first of all, for reconsidering the Wagner Winery demolition, and I disagree with the HPC and staff recommendations, and I ask that you find this building historically significant and that the city follow the environmental impact report process before granting final approval for the demolition. This building is indeed historically significant. There's intellectual dishonesty, and there's even in your draft resolution, a finding there that claims or finding that the building is not historically significant. And if you adopt that language, that's intellectually dishonest because this meets the standard under CEQA regulation, is associated with events that have made a significant contribution to broad patterns of California's history, and also is associated with the lives of persons important in our past. First of all, it was important for wine production in the early years of Livermore's viticultural industry. There's a lot of thing in that, information in the record about this. It's the last extent of structure of the Wagner Winery complex, which dates back to the 1890s, and it was the valley's only winery constructed beside railroad tracks, and it shipped product by train to a national market, as evidenced by the newspaper articles referenced in the record. And I've also included more newspaper articles, including the fact that it looks like it apparently was a Jewish kosher winery during prohibition, which is a new, so there's a lot, I mean, Nancy Bankhead said the site is amazing, there's a lot of historical significance that we don't know about. That's why we need an EIR to look at that and also to look at mitigation measures. And also, Henry B. Wagner, the founder, was important because he ended up having many land holdings here that now underlie the Livermore Lab. One of his sons sold that, also the Wagner Farms, the Valley East subdivision, the Vincinto subdivision, and also Wagner Drive runs through Sunset West, which is also owned by Will Wagner. And I should point out that John Shirley, the veterinarian who formerly served on this council, actually worked with livestock. One Wagner had sheep on Sunset West, the other one had cattle over there, Gatz Wagner over on Vosnel Valley East. And so I go on to say here in the letter I presented, the building does have integrity. The staff is wrong. They are misapplying the standard. And the most important thing out of that is it says in the Bible, NRB 15, quote, "Only after significance is fully established can you proceed to the issue of integrity." So it's almost an admission that the building is historically significant, because we're talking about integrity. And the structural integrity, this was made up by staff. The HPC was misled, the HPC made the wrong findings there. As you can read here, integrity, it also, ultimately, the question of integrity is answered by whether or not the property retains the identity for which it's significant, like Bodie, Nevada, Bodie, California, the ghost town. If you can... If you can look at it, and you look at it, it looks like an agriculture or industrial building, so it is, retains the integrity. And also, I don't think it's necessary to demolish this under the downtown specific plan. You need to make a find that it's necessary. It's convoluted here about that we need it for residential development, and also, you should not justify the demolition of a building, saying that the demolition itself is a public benefit of regional significance. So that's also dishonest in the findings there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bezis. Jeff Kasky, Malcolm Leader-Pacon, and Connie.
Hi, Jeff Kasky. Speak to you on this topic as me. I also sit on your Historic Preservation Commission. They communicate to you through their minutes. I don't personally feel that I was misled, but the statements from the HPC stand on their own. I did have the opportunity to tour the site, along with the HPC, and the building does still have its exterior walls, not much else, I'd have to say. And we talked a bit, I have to agree with Mr. Stein, that reuse is often a real thing that you'd like to see, even if you have to reconstruct it. In this particular case, you'd be reconstructing a building without windows. If you constructed something else that was actually usable as a facility, you'd be constructing something else, because the current building doesn't have the windows. So the building was judged as worthy of consideration for the National Register in 1988, when it was originally looked at. I think there's no doubt that the Wagner family is important, that the story of the Wagner Winery is also important and is significant in Livermore. The question at hand is whether the building itself conveys that historic significance. And it's an interesting place. I'm really into cool, old buildings, but I don't think that this particular building conveys to you the particular qualities and importance of wineries in Livermore. It's a large brick building. I said there were no windows. It's not quite true. There are some places where the bricks have fallen out, and you can see out through those. And so that might suggest at least a possibility. There were conditions imposed by HPC, as well as by the council here. I think that's going to be, go a long way towards helping to educate future generations about the site, and I think that's what's important here. I'm looking forward to seeing the story continued, and I would note that there's nothing in the demolition of this building that prevents the research that Jason asks for, or that anybody else would ask for, in terms of the Wagner family, the Wagner property, the import to Livermore, and in fact, the Livermore Heritage Guild does a lot of exactly that sort of research for buildings, standing or otherwise. So, thank you very much, and it's hard. We don't like to recommend any building be taken down that's historic, that's old. Sometimes, anything that's old, we look at and say, that's a pretty cool piece of Livermore history. So this is not something that we do for fun, that we do with pleasure, but in this particular building, we don't see the technical determination of the historic significance. Right? Thank you. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kaski. Malcolm Leader-Pacon and Connie.
I'm attorney for Nancy Bankhead and Fallon Enterprises, the owner of the property, and have reviewed very carefully your packet, and also the legal authorities that your city attorney cited to you, Friends of Willow Glen Tressel versus City of San Jose. And as the last speaker mentioned, just because something is old, doesn't mean it's got historical significance. And in this case, you have materials in your packet that discuss integrity. Your staff has analyzed the question of integrity. I think the other attorney who spoke to you, accusing everyone of intellectual dishonesty, has missed the mark. Clearly, the staff has analyzed this, and there is a lack of integrity to this particular building, because nothing about it says "winery." The physical lack of integrity just builds upon the lack of design integrity. There's nothing particularly special about it, as in the Friends of Willow Glen Tressel case. It's just a standard brick block that was used in a winery, but in and of itself, it does not convey winery. Yes, a fair argument might be made about historical significance here, but the question for you is whether you have sufficient information that you've been presented to support the staff's recommendation that demolition be approved, and that this is not a historic resource that should be preserved for the city of Livermore. It should be noted that the Wagners operated a winery on the site from 1890 to 1927, 37 years. The Bankhead family has owned this property since 1953, 63 years. It has not been in this winery use for all these years. It has had other uses, it's had other significance in the city of Livermore, and as has been noted, the suggested conditions will convey the Wagner Winery history, but will not stand in the way of this site being developed into something much more productive and special for the city of Livermore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leader-Pacon. And finally, Connie.
Forgot my top hat today. So I think I agree with the people that are trying to preserve the historical building, in a sense, and I'll tell you why. The first place I ever stepped foot in for fun, when I moved here 25 years ago, was antique shopping, I think, there, you know? And yeah, it was a little wobbly, there might be some integrity problems, but really, it really does go back a long time. We can't choose our own history for Livermore. The history is what it is. I was so taken back when my neighborhood was getting, there were changes to my neighborhood when the buildings went up by Pal-Mart, and I was really crushed when I read the EIR on that, or the, or the lack of an EIR saying there was no historical significance to that property. I really, really think you should do an EIR on the historical significance of the winery. I really like all the people involved, and I feel bad if I'm disagreeing with them, but really, we can't choose our own history. We can't really choose how, you know, we can choose how we want to market it, but you can't choose our own history, and to deny an EIR on that is just wrong. Please, put this through an EIR to see if there's a way to, you know, to bring the building back, to bring some character, keep some character alive. There's not a whole lot else you can really do there. It's pretty jammed. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, that's the last of our speaker cards, so I will close the comment period, and go to the council. I was the one that actually moved to have this come back, and I have absolute faith in staff. I mean, anybody, I don't question anyone's integrity in this, I don't think anybody's trying to mislead anybody, but the difference between historic integrity and structural integrity, and in what order do you consider those, and whether or not this building is in fact historic, if it has historic significance. Mr. Leader-Pacon said that this does not convey a winery. There's nothing about this that conveys a winery. However, in the staff report, it says that its simple brick masonry walls, wood roof structure, and metal roof are characteristics of winery buildings of the late 19th century in the Livermore Valley. So absolutely, that, everything about that building conveys a winery. The, I think, probably the guy that knows more about historic buildings in Livermore, Vice Chair Kasky, stated that he finds the building to have historic significance, and that, again, is in the staff report. It has historic significance, and that's what we're trying to determine here, is is this historic building? I was also struck by Commissioner Athie's comments, that she was concerned, to the request for demolition, there's no plan to do anything that was submitted, other than a drawing. It's not really a plan, and he's concerned that you demolish the building, you're just going to have a vacant site there. And so, again, we need to have further evaluation, and I think, as the vice mayor pointed out last time, is to have, have a third party, someone who's actually a structural preservationist that does this sort of thing. As I said, Ruby Hill burned to the ground, and that was a wonderful restoration that they did with Ruby Hill. So, based on what I have seen, the declaration, this actually is historically significant. The survey back in, let's see, the, here we go. When we did the historic building survey, the two-story building at Church Street is significant to the historical heritage of Livermore, because it's the only remaining building of the Wagner Winery, one of the oldest winery buildings in Livermore. So I keep hearing this over and over again, that this is a historically significant building, and we haven't had a third-party evaluation as to the, not just the historic significance, but the structural significance, or structural integrity and historic integrity. So those are my concerns, and that's why I asked to have this come back for consideration. Yes, the building is in sorry shape, but a third-party evaluation, perhaps, the vice mayor suggested, having a preservationist come out, staff had actually given us kind of a ballpark cost of what that might be. So everything that I have seen on this keeps coming back to that this appears to be a piece of significant history in Livermore. And like Ms. Cops, that was, one of the first buildings I went into in Livermore was check out the antique shop. So it is, and I didn't realize that mootness was actually a word, that that was kind of an interesting term, but, so that's my feeling on this, and we'll see where the rest of the council lies on this, but from what I've read on this, that there is historic significance here, and I think perhaps a third-party evaluation would be in order. Don't everybody jump in at once? Oh, Councilor Spawsky.
Well, since I didn't get a chance the last time to speak on this item, and I voted against bringing it back, but thank you now for the opportunity to speak. You know, as I sat watching on my couch the last time, I darn near threw on some sweats and drove down here to sit up here, so I can kind of weigh in on it, so. I volunteered at history museums. One of the reasons why I had to leave is because I was elected to council, I just didn't have the time. The museum that I volunteered at was actually a military vehicle museum, and sometimes we would get pieces of equipment in that were so far gone, that to restore them, you would have to use materials and techniques that you just can't replicate, and they're basically not the same vehicle when you get done with them. They look like it, potentially, but to the trained eye, and sometimes to the untrained eye, you just can't get the welds right, you can't get the construction right. It is no longer that same vehicle, and that's kind of what we're experiencing with this building. I think the building is its own enemy in this situation. The mortar is failing. You can't, no one can deny that. There are literally bricks popping out of the building, or people are pushing them out of the building. I don't think they're going in with jackhammers or sledgehammers. It's kind of the world's largest, most dangerous Jenga tower at this point. You know, I'm afraid, few more bricks, and then major portions of it are going to come down. Just doing a little bit of research about the type of mortar used back then, so we're talking, it's about 120-year-old mortar on the building, they either used lime or the clay in the mortar, and that had a life expectancy of about 50 to 80 years. So it's well outlived the life expectancy for the mortar. So that brings up the question, okay, what do you do? Do you re-mortar the building, which is basically reconstructing it from the ground up? It is no longer that same building. There are also questions about the bricks that have been up against that mortar for so long, either the lime or the clay content, then when you use modern mortar, such as like a, it's all based on Portland cement, you could be degrading the integrity of the bricks. So, you know, it's just, the mortar is the question here, and there are no short-term, mid-term, or long-term plans or funding to completely reconstruct this building. So, you know, leading back to the probably poor tank analogy at this point, but, you know, you can't also replicate the construction techniques, because the building is not earthquake-safe, and it doesn't meet any way, shape, or form, any of our building codes. So if you were to try to reconstruct it exactly how it is from the ground up, there would need to be major modifications to make a brick structure of that height safe for, you know, for earthquakes. We had our building official in the report, you know, say that the building is unsafe to occupy or even be near. We had our Historic Preservation Commission evaluate this over two meetings. I think there was a third meeting for some kind of clarification, where we had very little or no public comment whatsoever, and we also had an engineer's report, paid for by the property owner, but it is a certified and registered engineer with the state of California, come to the same conclusions. That is just, it is, it's extremely unfortunate. I wish there was some other way around it, but the mortar is literally failing on this building. The building is basically a hazard, and there is no way to save it. We could analyze this building into the ground, in terms of how to reconstruct and rebuild, but basically, it's long past its life expectancy for that type of building. And, you know, in the staff report, there was a line saying that, you know, potentially the building has lost sufficient integrity of its historic materials to conclude that it is irretrievably, sorry, lost historical significance. So the building, in my mind, has deteriorated past the point of saving and continuing as is. So that's why I would support the staff's recommendation, and also the conditions. I feel that at the last council meeting, and I don't know if those conditions or the modifications carry over, if we have to restate the conditions or the modifications, but I think, you know, using as much of the material as possible onsite, including the Wagner family history in the plaque and the mural, I think that's about as much as you can possibly do to honor this building. So, you know, I'm not comfortable with the fact that people, you know, even if you install additional fencing, people find ways into property. They're starting, there's evidence of fires being started in there, there's graffiti. Now that it's become more of an issue, I don't know if more people are now realizing that they can get into that building and pull bricks, but it's just an unfortunate situation that I see no other alternative than to approve the recommendation of staff. Thank you.
Further comments? Councilor Turner?
I made all the comments that, on the original meeting when we voted for this, and I agree with the comments that I made then. Further, we have a Historic Preservation Commission for a reason. I don't know Mr. Kasky very well, but I would, I have seen the work that he's done, I've seen the stuff at Hegeman Farms, and I trust in our decision to put him in the position that he's in with Historic Preservation Commission, and to advise us appropriately. I trust his advice, and I trusted it a month ago when we voted on this, or two weeks, whenever it was. When were you sick? Always.
I am always sick. I got an eight-year-old.
And I absolutely appreciate your reports, and I appreciate you being here, and frankly, I am convinced that if there was a reasonable way to save this building, Jeff Kasky would have recommended it. And frankly, this building has, yes, the Wagners are a historic family, but so are the Bankheads, and they've owned this building a heck of a lot longer than the Wagners, and it's falling apart. It's falling down, day by day. Bricks fall out. It's not safe. It's not safe. That's all I have to say.
Vice Mayor.
I think there's a question in here, and then I have a suggestion to be solemn, because I think we all want something, and maybe the rules of the road aren't giving us clarity on how to get there. I said last time, and I agree, the building itself, with the structural report we have, cannot be saved. I'm still concerned that the Historic Preservation Commission, in reading the minutes of three meetings, including some quoted by the mayor, I'm not going to repeat that again, more than one statement was made, it has had historic significance. I find the written record confusing, and I think staff and the commission confused themselves into saying, by virtue of... into saying, "By virtue of decades of abandonment, it now represented a danger and danger trumps history." I think the criteria that the city attorney laid out in the staff report for the council to find historical significance exists. It has history. The question is, can we preserve the history without going to the, perhaps, here's my solomonesque attempt here, to go to a full EIR. I think a full EIR with a Historic Preservation Report is overkill. The building can't economically, feasibly, site design, modern times be saved. I've never heard anybody say that, that. It's not in the record. However, I can't say, in the resolution last time, which is why we voted for reconsideration, the resolution said, "We find no historical significance." Had a very nice off-the-record conversation on the record with applicant, but no conditions of approval, there was no development project before us. The applicant said some great things and we swayed into saying, "Let's proceed with the demolition," forgetting that the resolution we approved said the building has no historical significance. I think there's a couple of different forks in the road here. One, which is kind of a loop, would be to send it back to Historic Preservation and say, disregarding the safety and the fact it comes down, was it historic and should a preservation report have been required? Or we can do that tonight. My question to staff is, without just blindly saying, "Sequel rules, let's do a complete environmental study," can we get what would have been included had Sequel had been triggered on a Historic Preservation Report that the applicant can then come back with and say, "This is how I intend to preserve the history of the building, the site, and the property." I don't think we let Livermore allow age and decades of non-use to negate history and recording and documenting the history and the reuse of the building. I'm trying to separate those two. I'm not advocating to spend some unworthy amount of money to save it as is, but let's record the history, let's do what I think the fourth trigger in the law requires. My question to staff is, can we have our cake and eat it too? Can we get some kind of a report here without going the full EIR, expensive, multi-month-long, six-figure thing, when we really don't care about the other environmental conditions of the site, whether the historic absence or not on the environment, we care about the history and guiding the applicant into reusing the history?
Your city attorney and your city manager were debating whether there was a question in there. We determined that there was, at least we think, so we're going to give a shot at trying to answer the question here. And that is actually what you would be proposing, Vice Mayor Gary, would be to return to the Historic Preservation Commission with direction to develop additional information in very specific ways. And so, as you heard from your attorney, that once an official finding has been made of the city, of a particular finding, that triggers a particular process. Your comments seem to indicate that that was not your conclusion. You had not found that, you did not wish to trigger that process, however, you wished to have more information and you also wished to have specific conditions developed that you could be assured would ultimately survive any potential demolition and would survive a change of ownership in the property. So, if that's essentially, if that was the question, can you do that? Yes, you could refer it, as long as three of you agree, back to the HPC with that direction to essentially, if you want a particular set of studies done, articulating generally what those would be. And if your desire ultimately is to develop a set of appropriate conditions and then appropriate mechanisms to make sure that those conditions are ultimately applied to the property and run with the land, yes, that's something your staff can facilitate for you.
Or, my or question was, if three of us tonight say it's historically significant, can we condition the demolition permit with a history report as Sequel would have required absent all the other requirements of Sequel?
No.
Okay.
That's quite clear.
Well, let me just make one point before we go too far here. So, as we heard, during the deliberative process by the Historic Preservation Commission, it was determined and stated that this building is historically significant. And later on in the minutes, it says, "The commission recognized the history of the former Wagoner Winery building as well as its current condition of deterioration." And we've been, again, talking about the difference between historic integrity and structural integrity. And then later it says, "The primary consideration," and I will add, "was not the historic significance." It says, "The primary consideration for the conclusion was the deterioration of the state of the building." At the direction of the commission, staff modified the findings and conditions of the approval for the certificate of appropriateness. So, the number one consideration was not the history of the building, it was the state of the building. And the point that we were drawn to last time was that there was no historic significance of the building and my contention is, is that it is.
And again, it is obviously quite a thin line. If the building were not there, even though the building, when it existed, was incredibly significant, there would be no question that, since it didn't exist any longer in that form, it was no longer significant. Once there was significant on that site, when a building partially exists, that becomes much more complicated. Because if it were completely gone, it would be very clear. If it were in perfect condition, it would be very clear. And in between, there actually is the question of whether the building itself conveys that historical significance. There's no question that historical things happen on the site, there was, there's no question that at one time, this building was involved in history, but that's essentially the wrestling that you saw your HPC go through there, is, is this building actually historically significant? And you cannot exempt the building from the state in which it is in. Now, I mean, in the, obviously, the extreme example of it not being there anymore, you could not say it's significant. So, the concept of whether, you know, how it exists, how much of it exists, whether it actually can continue to exist is inextricably won't end in there. So, certainly if you wish to refer it back to the HPC, and it's the pleasure of the council to have those steps clarified for you, for the legal record, and furthermore, to be very clear about what conditions and additional requirements you want to place on the demolition, I think you have the ability to do that. The finding by this council that you noted of particular significance does trigger a very specific outcome and that is the use of an EIR. So, we just want to be clear as staff that you understand what your direction is and that we understand what that is as we take our next step.
Okay, very good, thank you. Councilor Warner?
Okay. And I purposely wanted to go last because I figured it was going to be kind of split like this. And in anticipation of that, I asked the city manager and city attorney earlier today some questions. I think that, you know, so to speak, we haven't really maybe dotted all the i's and crossed the t's as we may have or should have. I think we've also got to be practical here. So, I, my recommendation is we do what was just discussed and that is remand it back to the HPC and make sure that in the conversation, we're not conflating the condition of the building with whether it's a historic resource. And I think, what I've heard, multiple people speak here, it's, you're intertwining it in a way that's probably not the way this is supposed to be. I actually believe that once you go through this in a logical way and don't conflate those two issues, it's likely that you'll come to the conclusion that it is no longer sufficiently in a state that it could be a useful historic resource. This isn't whether it's historical, not in my mind, but it's whether it's a historic resource and that's where you can get practical. I think an EIR would be absurd, frankly, for this, given the state of it and all that, but that's not really the point. The point is, do we follow the rules and go at it? So, I think, you know, as long as we're being unreasonable in our expectations, the amount we want to spend here, why don't we move the railroad tracks back and then maybe it's got its significance, right? I mean, so this is, we've got to be practical, but I also believe that the HPC could have done this a little bit more precisely. So, I'm in favor of sending it back, be very clear, parse this thing properly and then run it back through. So, that's where I would go.
You want to give a shot at crafting out into a motion?
Well, I move that we remand this back to the HPC to analyze the situation and make sure that they're very careful not to conflate the integrity with the historic resource aspects of this and then send it back to us with the appropriate set of conditions.
There we go. That was the question, was if they do determine that it is appropriate to issue the certificate of appropriateness, you would like them to develop appropriate conditions to convey the history of the site and also you'd like staff to develop the appropriate mechanisms to make sure that those can ultimately be implemented.
And I believe that ultimately that will get a 5-0 vote.
Something more than a stack of 20 bricks high with a plaque on it, you know, something a little more significant than that. Any further comments? I'll second that motion.
And a discussion?
Certainly.
It's just, again, I think that even declaring it of historical significance doesn't change the structure and the state of the building that it's in right now. And declaring it historically significant doesn't create a plan to, we can't force a private property owner to restore a building from ground up on their site that has been declared by our building official as a hazard to, quote, "be near." In addition to that, I think there are challenges where, as I stated before, you can't reconstruct the building in its current state. You would need to modify it to make it earthquake safe, you would have potential issues with mortar and construction techniques, it is not the same building. And when I think historic preservation, I think just that, preserving what's there. I don't think of it as completely reconstructing a building and in particular, again, the building is its worst enemy. You know, it's brick by brick taking this thing down or somehow stabilizing it for earthquake safety. I just don't see where we're going with this, we'd be right back where we started from.
Here's what I'm talking about, not conflating the integrity of the building with whether it's historic. When I read this thing, you, it's whether it's a historic resource, not whether it's historic. And that's the key point. And one might conclude because of its state of affairs, because of what's all around it, the fact that the train tracks are no longer near it, it may not be considered a resource. I don't know. I'm saying, put it back to the commission and let them go through it without this confusion which we've got. And frankly, the conversation that I'm, that you're saying, you're right in the middle of putting the two together and I read this and you don't have to put it together to come to a practical answer here. So, just parse it, run it through and come back and then we're kind of okay.
Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. The motion passes with Marshand, Gary, and Werner in the majority. Okay, thank you. Staff have some semblance of direction there? Okay, all right, thank you. And again, compliment staff's work on this. I got to hand it to you guys, a lot of great information in there, you did a terrific job, so thank you very much. Okay, moving on to, there we go. Okay, 6.02, discussion and direction regarding the homeless survey findings and implementation of a housing program.
I'm Eric Uranga and I'm your Assistant Community Development Director. I think so, just to get me, and you did. So, tonight before you, as a presentation of the homeless survey results and recommendation of the next steps to address the issue of homelessness in Livermore. First, let me give you some background. Back in April of 2014, Mayor held a summit on homelessness, which over 200 residents, stakeholders, and service providers attended. The goal of that was to share information regarding what the current state of homelessness was in Livermore and to discuss possible solutions. And when, I guess the result of it was that additional information was needed to understand the complexities of homelessness in our community. And we set about the formation of a committee who was tasked with developing a survey to, and it says, "survey questions," so go out there and have the survey done by our folks who are homeless and to gather different information. And the survey questions gathered information on individual demographics, housing status, length, and number of times a person was homeless, their connection to Livermore, veteran's status, disability, and other health issues. Important part of this survey was, it was one, because of the good work of the committee, it was one survey like no other one that I've seen done before. Typical surveys were done like in the past by the county or more regional ones and they basically discounted. And with that, and, you know, since they were wider regional ones, someone who was homeless perhaps in Fremont or Hayward or Oakland was often, you know, very different and maybe the solutions and ways to solve homeless problems were different in different communities. And I think that's what the results of our survey kind of really indicated. That, you know, 129 surveys were completed, showed that, you know, different demographics, I'll go briefly, you know, 77 males, 38 females, six persons, you know, just different age groups, you know, kind of clustering around a 25 to 64 age group, although there were some that were more elderly and some that were under 24. You know, 67 individuals who live alone, 50 lived with others, usually as families. There were 12 veterans and about 80% of the residents reside in or have a connection with the city of Livermore.
If I could just make a question on that, or a point. So, it says, "Grew up in Livermore," was, the number was 29%, 34 people, that have family here, was, number was 51, 43%. So, do we take into account that people that grew up here probably had family here, so one is a subset of the other and that those two numbers don't necessarily add together, but one is a subset of the other?
That's a great question because I did ask that of our human services manager at the time and they were unduplicated, they do not overlap.
Really? So, we've got...
So, that was specifically asked.
We have a lot of people that grew up here but don't have family here.
Well, they grew up here and are still here and are ones who left and have family here and so I think that's the subtle difference there.
Because the number of responses was 167, so people answered the questions more than once. So, when I read through that, it was, it appeared that the numbers worked out that one was a subset of the other. And this is, so that's the concern that I had, that that number may actually be somewhat inflated, but go ahead, please.
Okay.
And it says, "We're stopping you, sorry." Where are the children?
The children, the children are a part of, you know, then haven't been called out individually, but they would be under the 50 who live with others.
Okay, so, and that's a, I mean, I've talked to Gene several times about the data because there is, there are some funkinesses with this survey. We have a bunch of families in the school district and my understanding, when I talked with Ms. Prazier, is those numbers are not on here. So, the children, there's not just six kids under the age of 24, we have several families.
That is true. That is true.
So, there was a separate document that had the listing of how many children are homeless. Is that in the presentation somewhere?
That did not make it on the demographics, but yes, there was an individual survey done of the school district and, and they were, and, uh, through, um, surveys that were handed out there, as well as discussions with the teachers and administrators, and, and there was, uh, a separate group of children identified under that. That's not reflected on this list.
Okay, do you roughly know the numbers?
Uh, we can find out, uh, fairly quickly, um...
One of the items on the school district survey is their standard is different than the survey used here. In other words, essentially a couch surfer who has no permanent residence, who moves place to place to place to place, does meet the qualification under, um, the school district's survey. That was not the focus of the homeless survey here. It was those who were unhoused.
Right. So, my understanding is we had over a hundred families that were couch surfers and that Jean had tweaked out the ones that were truly homeless, and I believe that number is around twenty and includes, which is why I know it's more than six kids under the age of twenty-four, because they all had children.
And, and that...
I believe we have those numbers somewhere.
Yes, they're, they're in the survey, I can, I can find it, take time to find it, but that, that's, uh, I think the, the numbers you're saying are correct.
Okay, yeah, because these numbers are significantly underreporting the numbers of homeless in Livermore, our school district. And we need to add them together.
Okay, will do. Um, based on this, uh, at, at, at May ninth council meeting, uh, council directed staff to use the findings to determine what the city can do to reduce homelessness in our community. So, what we did, we, we went back, um, with that and, um, and looked at, 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 staff looked at what, uh, financial resources were available out there, what the city currently does, and what models currently exist that can be used to address homelessness. Yeah. In terms of, uh, financial support provided, uh, just a little backup to, uh, what currently, the city currently does, we provide, uh, a range of, uh, you know, funding to a range of services, including twenty thousand annually to the, uh, to Tri-Valley Haven shelters, uh, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand to abode services for the homeless outreach program, and ten thousand dollars, uh, plus for, of CDBG funds to, uh, fund our Hope Medical Van, which provides mobile medical services to, um, and basic medical care to folks who are homeless. Um, so, financial support provided also included, uh, our AC Impact Program, where the city works with, uh, five other cities in Alameda County, uh, to, uh, fund case management services, um, and to, uh, and using vouchers, help, uh, homelessness in each community to find housing and supportive housing. And then there's also, we have, uh, food programs and, uh, health, uh, access community healthcare, which provides medical services to, uh, lower income fund, uh, folks, and we provide twenty-seven thousand for access and ten thousand to Open Heart Kitchen. But these aren't exclusively for folks who are homeless, but do, but folks who are homeless do take advantage of those programs. Um, in terms of permanent supportive housing, we currently, uh, have, uh, developed five units of, uh, affordable, uh, permanent supportive housing on McLeod through the acquisition and rehab of a, a five-unit building, uh, close to downtown. We're also working with the county to provide, uh, housing vouchers through the Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing Program, or VASH. And, uh, with that, we've have a number of, um, um, vouchers that, uh, specifically target for veterans, and, uh, and once housing becomes available, we're able to, um, find them places to live and, and along with that, uh, services that comes with that. Also, with the housing authority, uh, we, uh, we, uh, help, uh, they're helping us with these programs by providing project-based rental assistance vouchers for, uh, for people, which allows them to go to market rate units and, uh, and effectively afford to, to live there and through abode services, um, are able to get the necessary services. And lastly, uh, we also, there's a, a new strong collaboration between our police department and abode services, uh, to address homeless and, uh, issues regarding the homeless encampments and, uh, and also homelessness in our downtown area. Um, we looked, uh, we also looked at a homeless service models, uh, and what, what's basically, what's out there, that's currently out there, uh, you know, and what could be used, um, that we could bring in and use to, to help address this issue. We found that there's basically two different models out there. The shelter-based model, which is, uh, a more standard traditional model that's been used by a lot of communities, and the housing-first model. Under the shelter verse, uh, first, uh, the shelter-based service model, I'm sorry, uh, under this model, a homeless person, uh, finds temporary housing at an emergency shelter. Uh, they stay usually, uh, up to six months, you know, between two weeks and six months generally. The service they provided, uh, you know, are provided onsite with the goal of eventually moving a person to permanent housing. This model is the main approach that Livermore has used in the past, as well as what most cities in the Bay Area have utilized. Um, and the, the, the second model that, that's out there is the housing-first service model. Under this model, a homeless person is moved into permanent housing as soon as possible. You know, and then once they're in housing, the program focuses on providing the necessary services to keep them in that housing. Uh, and it enables participants to maintain the house, uh, the service, to maintain their housing indefinitely. Um, you know, the services include mental health, uh, services, as well substance abuse treatment, job training and, uh, other supportive services. Um, the housing, under the housing-first model, the results of this model have been, um, have been, uh, pretty successful. Uh, in the state of Utah, used it, uh, and it has, um, successfully reduced the number of homelessness in their, uh, decreased the number of homelessness in the, in the state by ninety-one percent. Uh, New Orleans and Phoenix, the cities, uh, the cities have, uh, homeless veterans have decreased to, to effectively to zero. Uh, Los Angeles homeless veterans, uh, under this program have decreased by more than six thousand since, uh, twenty thirteen. You know, uh, because of the success, success of this program, both HUD, uh, that's the Federal Housing, uh, Department of Housing and Urban Development, and, uh, the state of California, um, and its housing programs are be, uh, beginning to focus their funding primarily on this model and moving away, uh, I mean, away from the shelter-based models. Um, so, uh, based on that, and based on the success of the housing-first, uh, um, model, staff recommends that council direct staff to create a, a housing-first program within our community. We feel that this will aid, uh, in reducing homelessness in Livermore by, uh, creating permanent housing with, uh, supportive services. As well, um, as, um, as part of it, we'll need to fund existing service providers to make, to ensure that there's, uh, there's sufficient, uh, wraparound supportive services that come with this housing. And then, uh, and as part of this, uh, staff is also requesting that, uh, the creation of a limited duration, uh, homeless prevention specialist, uh, to, uh, to be funded in the next, uh, our next budget year. Um, well, if we were to move forward on the, on the, um, housing-first model, uh, we feel that we'd, uh, use a four-pronged approach. First, we would identify, uh, and address the strengths and weaknesses of our existing programs, uh, projects and funding sources. And, you know, what, what we currently do, what works well, where the gaps are, and then, uh, and look to ways that we can provide, uh, additional funding to those nonprofit service providers, as well as, uh, maybe, uh, expand, you know, expand the services and create new sources and new, new collaborations with our service providers and maybe bring other ones in too. Then, um, you know, um, and then, uh, use these different services to coordinate with, uh, nonprofit service providers and the service, uh, housing owners and developers, as well as the public agencies, to create that source of, uh, of permanent housing. And, uh, you know, and, and then taking the services and finding the customized, uh, serve, uh, taking the service provide, uh, services provided by our organizations and use, and customize them to fit the, the needs of the persons that will be entered into the housing. Uh, the third step, uh, and one of the more crucial ones, is to create, uh, the affordable housing units that will be used, uh, in the program. Um, that's the critical part of the model, is to provide that stable permanent housing and then use the services. And, and, you know, for, uh, and use, uh, use these units and target it specifically for people who are homeless, who are at, uh, risk of becoming homeless. And then lastly, uh, and I think also really important for the ongoing, uh, process of the program, is, uh, develop, uh, prevention programs. It's, uh, you know, just, uh, just in general, it's far easier and far less expensive to prevent someone from becoming homeless than it is to, uh, help them come out of homelessness once they're at that state. You know, and you do this through, uh, you know, uh, creating and, uh, expanding our substance abuse and mental health counseling programs, and, you know, develop landlord tenant services programs so people don't lose their units for, uh, for, uh, you know, because, uh, they've temporarily lost their job or for health reasons, uh, and, you know, and maybe some, uh, job training and emergency funding intervention type programs. Um, so, um, it, uh, what we, uh, are requesting is a fairly large endeavor, and actually a major undertaking. And we, we wouldn't begin, uh, outright to try to, uh, serve every single category of homelessness. And I think one of the, um, um, strengths of our surveys, we've identified a number of groups that we can target and, and work on the specific services that they're needed, that need it, and specific types of housing that are needed for them. And then once we've established that and got that up and running, come back to council and ask for, uh, uh, for, uh, to move forward on prioritizing, uh, a new group of, of folks. And what I would recommend is that we start off, uh, on, uh, the three, uh, uh, different groups that we have up here, veterans, families with children, and, uh, chronically homeless persons with disabilities. Um, so, just, uh, next step, in summary, um, to summarize, uh, with, uh, um, staff request that, uh, uh, council direct staff to, uh, develop a housing-first program to reduce homelessness, uh, through the creation of, of, uh, permanent affordable units and, uh, with supportive services. Focus on the, uh, three priority groups, veterans, families with children, as well as, uh, chronically homeless folks with disabilities. And then, uh, as part of this, uh, create a limited durations, uh, homeless prevention specialist position, uh, uh, to be funded in the next budget year. Um, that concludes, uh, my presentation, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Uranga. Questions for, uh, for, for Mr. Uranga? Questions at this point, uh, council member?
You have cards? Oh, I can wait till...
No, questions? If you have questions for... Yes, we do.
Oh, okay.
Questions were, we'll save the comments for...
I guess just a, a quick question, um, um, either for, uh, Mr. Uranga or the city manager. I've been working on this for five years, and, um, it's been two and a half years since the summit, and, and we're talking at about three years to get people off the streets or most of them. Um, and you're asking for a position that doesn't start, I'm assuming, until like next July, because we're looking at the next budget year. Um, is there a mechanism in place where we can speed this up a little bit?
Yes. Um, as you know, when we talk about our roles, the council determines the budget, um, and the priorities, and so if it was the pleasure of the council, you could direct us to begin working on that position essentially, um, sooner than that essentially, as, as soon as would make feasible sense on that. So, that would be at the pleasure of the council.
Thank you.
Council member Gary, uh, Vice Mayor Gary?
You mentioned the priority target groups, which certainly makes sense. But within that is this loose construct of how many units we have versus the population over time. And I do agree, we need to get moving sooner rather than later. That's a separate discussion after we hear the, the public input. But the question is, can, will the federal funding, as it exists today, or could staff research, are there criteria that we could establish a Livermore-first, housing-first program, so that there are legacy connections to the community, family, lived here, went the military, family moved away, you came back? And I'm not expecting you to necessarily have the answer tonight unless it's heck no. But I, I'd be very concerned about being the first to do something so positive and become the bus stop destination for some, for everybody who wants access to a housing-first program, and they've been in Livermore thirty days. So, how do we rectify our scarce resources in terms of units, not dollars, units, to, to a Livermore-first, housing-first program?
Uh, I think absolutely, we, we can, um, create programs that give a strong preference for, uh, Livermore, uh, residents and folks who have connections to Livermore. For, uh, much, a more difficult, if, when you use federal resources, because, um, but we, uh, I propose that we use, uh, mostly local, uh, resources that were, that we've come, you know, city resources. And by doing that, I think we could, uh, have that preference, um, I believe strongly in Livermore-first. Um, and a couple of ways we could do it is, uh, is how we, um, do our outreach. One good example is, uh, for families with children, we go to the school district. So, you have kids who are in Livermore schools and who are homeless. Uh, I think by definition, that makes them Livermore residents and, and members of the Livermore community, they go to our schools. And we would target them and, and their families and help that. Uh, it's easier to identify, uh, Livermore veterans too, uh, separate from, uh, other ones. And, and, um, and as well as we'd work with, uh, our service providers and, uh, our police force and stuff to identify the folks who are chronically mentally ill, who've been in our community a long time and who have connections with our community, and, and, and prioritize and target them first, uh, like that. And I think, uh, we can go a long ways towards doing that.
And, uh, Vice Mayor Gary, I'd just like to respond and weigh in on this particular issue. It is something we need to coordinate closely with our office, the city attorney's office and the housing division, to make sure that we did respect the requirements in FIA, the Fair Employment and Housing Act, to make sure that any, for any preferences complied with that area law, and that we didn't, uh, get a foul of it.
And that's why later, that, I didn't expect the answer tonight, but the willingness to research the possibilities and to construct possibly that framework, uh, possibly before we actually employ the person, but in parallel with doing the recruitment.
Certainly, and if that's the council's direction, we'll definitely coordinate.
Yeah, I've got a question, because I, I saw right after Vice Mayor Gary, uh, made his suggestion that the attorney started reaching for the microphone. I think this is, uh, you gotta be real careful, because what you said, you know, by definition, if you have kids here and you're in, you're a resident, yeah, but then if, just, if you're residing here, you're a resident, right? So, that's the problem. So, the question that might come up and would ask the attorney is, can we put a timeframe for how long you need to have been a resident before you're available? I mean, is that a, is that a particular kind of criteria that we could put in here?
That's one thing we'll definitely explore, is what the tenure is, and whether a longer tenure gives you greater preference, but that'll be something we'll be exploring, yes.
Okay, so, that, that's the kind of thing you gotta think through, but not just by saying, you got kids, by definition, you're a resident, because that's, that won't work. Yeah, I, I believe there has to be some residency tenure required in order to make sure we're not that, uh, bus stop.
A couple of questions. Uh, it's, uh, my understanding, the city of Livermore provides funding for some of the shelters that are in the, in the area?
Yes.
Uh, how many shelters are there in the Tri-Valley?
In Tri-Valley, there are, there are three shelters.
Two shelters, and then there's also the, uh, the warming centers during the wintertime?
That's correct, yeah.
Uh, where are those?
They, all of them are in the city of Livermore.
So, all the shelters and for the, the homeless disadvantaged and the abused are in Livermore?
Uh, yes.
And how many, uh, how many other cities in the Tri-Valley provide funding, uh, to shelters?
Uh, all, all the cities in Tri-Valley.
All of them do?
Yes.
So, they all contribute to the, uh, to the Livermore shelters?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Um, 'cause that's, uh, um, obviously a concern, uh, that I share with the, the other members of the council. Uh, so, with that, um, any other questions at this point? Okay, um, we do have some cards. Steve Wild, uh, Alan Burnham, uh, Kim Reisdorf.
Steve Wild had...
Pardon me?
He had to go home.
Oh, Steve Wild left, okay. Uh, Alan Burnham and Kim Reisdorf.
Good evening again. Um, I've, I've been before you to talk about several issues in the past, probably more than you cared to hear, but I'm here now to talk about what I care about the most, actually. It's what I am personally putting more of my time and financial resources in than all those others put together. It's my greatest passion, which is really, uh, reducing poverty and homelessness. Several years ago, I was concerned that most of the efforts that I saw were really directed towards symptomatic relief and not directing, uh, not addressing root causes. And, and I didn't see a viable program, uh, although I was looking around, until I met, uh, Pastor Kim Reisdorf, who introduced me to the circles concept. That concept is to surround people in poverty and risk of homelessness with a group of allies that can help them help themselves. In other words, you're not there, uh, to tell them what to do, to help them so that they can find this, uh, their, their own way. Uh, in other words, it is a hand up, not a hand out. We started about a year ago, um, it's all private donations, um, and, uh, thank you, Mayor Marshand, you handed out the certificates for our first graduating class, first week of, uh, of June, so we, we have been around. Um, we, we were known as circles... We were known as Circles for Change. We just incorporated under the name Partners for Change because of a trademark issue, which we don't really want to get into here. I am the chairman of the board of directors, and our program is not directed for homeless. It's not, that's not our target. We happen to have a fair amount of homeless in our program, but it's really trying to deal with people who are really in risk, in poverty and risk of being homeless, so that we can essentially give them the life skills and a support system so that they can be successful. And, but even so, we have had a fair number of homeless in our program. And so, those of us who participated have had a lot of eye-opening experiences. I'm, well, I imagine, Bob, you knew what it would like to be poor as a graduate student, okay? So, but that's a different thing, because you see a light at the end of the tunnel. And not everybody sees a light at the end of the tunnel. And that's, that's the difference between temporary and long-term. So, so I think the issue that I, it was sort of alluded to, but I think it needs to be stronger, is that none of these things will be successful unless you have a support system around to make sure that people are getting the emotional and support to be successful. Our program is really, can only address a part of the problem. We don't have expertise in substance abuse and mental health problems. We can't, we can't do anything for those people. But there are, with some fraction of these people, that we are well-suited to take care of. I do support the main conclusion that Housing First is an important program. I learned about our program actually at a party at my son's house, and still, your son was there, actually. And the drummer in my son's band, it actually works in the Housing First program in San Francisco. So I learned about why it's important. And we see it in our people. You cannot get these other things together unless you have a base to operate from. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burnham. Kim Reisdorf?
Good evening. I'm Pastor Kim Reisdorf from Asbury United Methodist Church, and I want to start with thanking the council and the city for tackling this issue. It's not the most popular one, but it is the one that will transform all of us if we address this. And I can swear on a stack of bibles, it's sort of an occupational hazard, that...
You got a few.
That housing matters. Getting people in housing is transforming in terms of the better decisions you can make, but it's not enough. And those wraparound services are critical. When Utah started its program, which has been phenomenally successful, 91% of homeless addressed. Different geographical situation in many ways and economic, but when I went to visit some of their sites, they say it's the wraparound services that are critical. And to that point, I want to pick up on something that council member Turner mentioned about the survey. I sat on the organization and administrative council that did that. Those numbers aren't accurate. We did not look at people living in their cars. And I consider that homelessness. The numbers are far higher. You can't make good decisions if you're sleeping in your car. And the amount of units that we recommend in the report was 120 units. I think it's much higher than that. So I wanted to add that to it. Of the people that I've got to watch through the Partners for Change program move into housing, someone said something that had stayed with me and motivated me since. Once she got out of living in her car, and she went on to get a job and stability, but once she moved out of her car, she said, "I feel safe enough to feel hope again." I want to be the type of city, the type of community, that offers that kind of hope and transforms people. So may it be so for us.
Thank you very much. That's the comment cards that I have.
Yeah, I'd like to...
Oh.
It's, you know...
Okay, so we'll put Connie Cops down.
Yeah, put me on that guy who was in Harris' card, just changed his mind. So I had a question too, like how much different Housing First is from the Section 8 program? Because I'm all about, you know, the hand up and not a hand out. I also really like, I went to that, there was like a little consortium or gathering at a church over on Vasco, I forget the name of the church, where they addressed this issue. And I really think that sometimes Section 8, you know, I've worked with the community at large as a substitute teacher, and in the daycare after-school programs in the Tri-Valley. And, you know, we are, you know, a pretty rich community, and as you brought up before, you know, our low-income people have a pretty high income. And we do need, I think, we need a place, a way for people to like have a sense of purpose. We need the jobs. We need different levels of housing. One of the things that I really want you to think about, you know, if you're going to group people together like Housing First does, is you don't want to label people. You know, working with the classroom and the students, you don't want kids to have to go to like a certain neighborhood that, you know, might get found out later. I like the 30-30-30, you know, deal where you, where people pay like 30% of their income, like sliding fee scale housing. Not everyone, our millennials don't really care about big houses like, you know, my generation kind of did, and like as kids, they might have, but they're finding that, you know, a lot of people are really taking pride in like living in smaller spaces. Many, many, many years ago, I got to visit like my grandmother, my cousin's grandmother, my cousin's cousin's grandma. We had this, this whole house of, this whole building full of grandmas that we got to visit, because they all kind of like got to move into the same building on sliding fee, you know. Some of them were way really well off, and some of them weren't, but they wanted to be together. And I think we want to, we want to put, in our Housing First model or whatever you decide, we want to make it, like he said, something that's unique, something that's going to be, we're going to be proud of, and something that we're, people aren't going to feel embarrassed to go into. And if we do have people that do need wraparound services, let's train our community members who have it together to give them a hand up as well. So, you know, we could have an RA-type of person who could trickle some knowledge down to other people and just give people that sense of purpose back. I think if you put somebody like in a Section 8 housing, you know, I know a lot of people appreciate it, and they're there for a short time or whatever, and they find ways to be part of the community, and that, that's what's important, is to make sure we're not labeling people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cops. Okay, that's it for the comment cards that I've got. This is, this is a regional problem. That's one of the, this is when I convened the mayor's regional summit on homelessness, I was hoping to bring the other communities in. And as Mr. Uranga pointed out, all the shelters are here in Livermore, and I think that's really unfortunate. And the city of Livermore was one of the pioneer cities to launch the mayor's challenge to end veteran homelessness. Truly a noble cause. We were the only one in the Tri-Valley to do that. And I think that's unfortunate, because it shows the level of commitment that Livermore has to solve a regional problem. Councilmember Turner, at a council meeting, made the point that there were hundreds of homeless veterans living in the region. And we were able to identify here living in Livermore, about 20 of them. And yet, there are hundreds in the region. But Livermore is now setting up to be the only community that is willing to take this on. And that's daunting, because I will tell you, I have personally witnessed other agencies taking their homeless to Livermore. And it was actually in the paper, there was a neighboring city that they were asked what services they provided the homeless. And the city staff member said, "We don't have a homeless problem here. When we encounter a homeless person, we give them a taxi voucher to Livermore." And, and that's wrong. And I share the vice mayor's concern that, that we will take on this regional problem, and everybody will be happy to say, "Let Livermore take that on." I added kind of backwards into the survey, and I got 66% of the people that we contacted were not from Livermore. Kind of depends on how you calculate, but if you look at, that they came here for the shelter, other, other was 25%. So if over 80% are from Livermore, and 25% are other, that, that doesn't work. So, and you have people that came here, they were visited, decided to stay, access to services. So we have the services. So one of my concerns is that Housing First is a program that works, no question. One of the problems that we do have with HUD is that we are a very expensive area to live. And the vouchers that we get don't cover the housing costs here. So what I would like to see is to have a greater regional consensus and a regional collaboration. One of the rather disturbing things I heard from one of the directors of All in Alameda County, which addresses poverty in Alameda County, told me straight up, though, "Well, there is no poverty in the Tri-Valley." And we all know that that's, that's not true. But this is a funding agency of Alameda County that believes that there is no poverty in the Tri-Valley. And we know very much that that's different. So my concern is that we're going to take on this responsibility, and everybody's going to be happy to let us do it. So I would like to see more focus put on a regional collaboration, so that everybody, that all the cities in the region participate, and the county as well, that Livermore doesn't take this on by itself, because this is a regional problem. So I share the vice mayor's concern as well, that, that how do we focus on, on the number of people that did grow up here? And the people that have, and if they have family here, obviously, there's some reason that they can't live with their family. That's another reason why we need those wraparound services. So this is a lot bigger than just what we can do. It's going to take regional collaboration, it's going to take county, state, and federal support on this. And that's why I'd like to see more of a regional collaboration on this, rather than just one city trying to take on the whole effort. Seems like you're starting to wave there.
No, I, some of what you say, you know, resonates with me. And I would, I would suggest a, an "and" here, of that we do the recommendations, you know, we follow through with what staff is suggesting here, and we do the regional, encourage the regional approach. And the reason I believe we can do the "and" is what Vice Mayor Gary suggested, is that we have the criteria, so that we're focusing first on the, those that are from Livermore. I mean, whatever that definition is, but that are truly from this area. We can't solve the whole problem, and we definitely can't take on the region's problem. So I think we can do both this plus and continue to encourage the regional approach. And so, the one other thing that I would add to this, and then I'm kind of done, is that I like the slide on the approach, and you know, you had the four pieces to that, I would add a fifth, and that is that we periodically refresh our data, so that we can determine the efficacy of what we're doing. And as we do refresh the data, that we incorporate the lessons learned from the first survey, because I think we've all got some questions about what the data really means. So I think we learned, and that was the reason we went down the first path with the survey, is to kind of get a sense of the problem. We didn't get a perfect sense of the problem, and we mentioned this stuff with respect to the cars and others, but we've at least started. So I think, you know, we got more to do. So I would do both.
And that was one of the misconceptions that has been persistent, is one of the questions that the county asked in their survey was, where was the last place that you had permanent residency or received services? And since Livermore has all the services, most of the people responded that that was the last place they received services.
Right. In my, in my normal day job, the worst thing you can do is ask a compound question. That doesn't give you an answer. Right? So that's kind of one of the lessons learned in the survey. And also this thing about, well, are you, are you both, you know, and you pointed out a couple of questions. So we, we could be a little more, a lot more careful in the survey. We learned something. So let's just, you know, continue here. And I think, I think the issue is pressing enough that we need to, need to devote some of the resources that we have towards solving the issue.
But I would also like to see that, that regional collaboration, that we bring the other cities in, that we don't take this on by ourselves.
Fine. And that's why I say it's an "and" approach, that we, we focus on the priority groups that are Livermore-generated, and we encourage, because if we wait to get the whole regional solution, it, you know, it may not be in our lifetime. But we can, we can at least make some progress with the limited resources we have for those that are of Livermore.
Councilman Spadowski?
Sure is waiting till after the public comment cards, but I, you know, it's, it's all positive. I think we're discussing a lot of long, long-term goals, as Councilmember Warner just stated. But I can support Councilmember Turner's motion to expedite the hiring of this position. I think it's the next step in tackling this issue. And from a personal note or concern, you know, my, my day job dealing with stormwater programs and flood control districts, I get very concerned when I see people camping out in flood control zones. Very, very concerned. You have a 100-year flood, that's coming very quickly through those areas. And it'd be nice to see, you know, some kind of awareness about that. But I know Contra Costa County conducted a survey of all of the homeless in their flood control zones, and there's, it was, it was a fascinating survey and a very large document to go through, but there are multiple reasons why people choose to, to camp out there. But that's just one of the areas of concern that I've always had, because I know we have that here in town. So anything we can do to not move at the speed of local government would be great. Make the process a little bit quicker and get this position on. I think that's the next immediate step that we can do, and start tackling some of these longer-term, major issues that we're talking about.
I didn't actually make a motion yet. Or did I? But yeah.
Is it motion or suggestion?
You said motion, but I'll go ahead and do that.
It felt like a motion.
But just a couple of points, adding on to what other people said, yes, let's do things faster. Secondly, when it comes to the veterans and the statistics I cited about the veterans, those are Livermore residents that were not counted, because they have such significant PTSD, they live in the hills. So they typically come to the VA once a month. They estimate anywhere between 80 to 120 veterans live up in the hills. And so they camp, they go up past the VA, I've got, we know about these people, right? And 80 to 100, roughly? Okay. So from the VA, and they'll actually, over the course of the month, traverse all the way across over towards Del Valle, sometimes farther, and then, because they can't be around people, their PTSD is so significant. And then, when they come back, they come back monthly to pick up their check, their medications and all that, then they go back out into the hills. So those numbers are not, that's, that's our area. Those, there's significantly more that live other parts of the, the community. Were you able to get the numbers on the schools? The numbers of families and children?
Uh, no.
We were to find that?
No, I did not.
Okay. And my understanding from the gentleman that was at the school district when we were working on this, he estimated 100 children were homeless in Livermore. And that's not counting cars. Then, the estimates were anywhere from 300 to 500 additional people living in cars, and hundreds more people kept surfing. So our numbers are incredibly lowly reported. And the, the people that, that you talked to have a tie to Livermore, the majority of them. I'm sure there might be some other people, but these are people from Livermore. However, I agree 100% that we need a regional focus, but when our regional peers aren't excited about it, then it, we can't force them. We can lead by example, and we can show them it's the right thing to do for our community, and revel in our successes, and hopefully, they'll come along with us eventually. Hopefully, the Affordable Housing Bond passes, that'll give some needed money. Every one-home board is absolutely working, looking at the same exact model, and with wraparound services and those programs will certainly help support what we do here with those, with that bond money and whatnot. This is a huge issue for our community, not just because it's the right thing to do, but from every other aspect, that, you know, you get people sleeping on the streets, people don't want to move here, they don't want to have businesses here, and it's the right thing to do. So I absolutely would love to move staff recommendations with the proviso that I personally would feel that we should hire somebody sooner if we can. And I believe there was in the staff memo a potential... And I believe there was in the staff memo a potential funding mechanism for that position if we chose to do that, using affordable in lieu fees. I hate to use them for something other than housing, but this might be the best way to get this moving forward. And so, that would be my recommendation, so that we can at least make some traction. And then, hopefully, from the state level, the regional level, really start, and engaging, all of us engaging our peers, saying, "Why aren't you guys doing something about homelessness? We need to be talking to the council members in Dublin and Pleasanton and saying, 'Hey, this is what we're doing, why aren't you doing more?'" Because that's where we're, we have the ability to push them into acting, and we need to.
Can you add a couple of things to what you said? And that's, one is that we develop the criteria for the prioritization.
Absolutely.
And that, just as you, you know, alluded to, maybe we've dramatically undercounted, but let's try again. So, let's periodically refresh our data. So, if you could add those two things, then...
Yeah, absolutely. And then, with any ongoing data collection, the data collection process was flawed. We didn't count couch surfers, we didn't count, we asked people, "Do you live with somebody?" But did we count the people they're living with, if they're living in their car, or did we not count those people? So, the way we counted that mechanism certainly needs to be improved for the future. And so, as we're out there with these people, it'd also be nice to know how many of the original people we counted got, are no longer homeless, because one of the pieces of the outreach when we did the survey out in the community was, "Do you know," you know, there's a ton of people that said they didn't know what services we had. So, people educated them. So, hopefully, just the act of doing the survey helped a ton of people. So, I see less people than I saw this time last year. So, I'm hopeful that that may have helped a little bit, at least, with what we've already done. But yes, I'm happy to add all of that. And the Livermore First, I love that.
Well, one specific add, and we've got to remake the motion in a minute, there hasn't been a second, so we can help with this, that the report back on the criteria. So, let's think about this in terms of crawl, walk, run, because there's four great things now floating up here that can't occur concurrently. Fly the recruitment for the position. While the position is being recruited, research the Livermore First criteria, bring that back to council as the position comes on board. So, the council, the coordinator, and the staff have a first-pass vision of how to go out in the field. Then, freshen your data with the partner nonprofits and organizations, so our new person gets to know all of them, and they can rebuild a collaborative data freshening. Then, you finally step off the curb and implement. But I'd hate to see the person six months in, and then trying to figure out, "Well, what is it I'm supposed to do in terms of Livermore First?" I think that's council policy direction, and they ought to have it when they start the job. So, if you'd like to remake the motion, maybe with...
And also add that regional collaboration piece.
Right.
Okay, do you need to remake that motion, or are all those amendments clear enough for you? You want to hear me try?
Can you read that back?
I moved staff recommendations with all the recommendations of my peers.
All right.
So, I moved that we do move forward, that we expedite the position and try to hire the person faster. I moved that you come back to us. With key findings on the Livermore First program, I like the name, want to keep the name, giving absolute preferential treatment for people born, raised, or with some sort of longevity of connection to Livermore, meaning they've lived here in some capacity. With each touch of the community, we need to continue to manage our data and manage it better, so that we know where we're at, and that we can report our metrics of better reporting data, and also, how many people we've served, and how many people we've helped, so that we can continue to report that. And we'd like to do that quickly, with the least amount of money as possible, and engage all of our regional partners and encourage them to join us.
Second.
Are you clear on that? You've come a long way in two and a half years. And I certainly, I want to acknowledge the work of the subcommittee, and that's Councilmembers Turner and Warner, because you guys were sort of set loose on this, and really want to commend your work on this effort. So, thank you very much.
And Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, staff understands the direction, and also, staff is constrained in our resources. So, we absolutely understand the urgency of the matter. And the tricky piece here is the additional resources being brought on board and the work tasks being completed. But we understand what the intent is, we will certainly be bringing something back to you, and at the very least, we will get you a timeline and some bullet points on that by memo relatively soon, so that we can understand. Bluntly, it'll probably be incorporated into your goals, since those are fewer than 60 days away, you'll have a little bit of a roadmap there, so that we all collectively understand what we're trying to sign up for here. But I think your intent is clear for staff.
As long as the wheels are moving, I don't care. It's not like we didn't give you, like, a ton of work last time.
Yeah, there was a whole lot of stuff there, and we do need, you know, a realistic implementation plan.
And I didn't mean to get in the way of you voting on your motion, I just wanted to be clear of what would happen if you voted for the motion.
That all comes down into the discussion on the motion, so that all works. Okay, so it's been moved, seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? Passed unanimously. Great work, everyone, thank you very much. It is now 10:30. I need general consensus from the council to determine if we're going to keep on going. Works for me? All right, everyone nodding? Okay, so we're good to go on that, Mr. City Attorney? And now, we go to the location criteria for potential medical marijuana dispensaries. Thank you very much, Pastor Allen. Thank you. Scott Lee's back.
Yes. Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. At council's direction, staff studied and identified a potential area in which a medical cannabis dispensary or dispensaries could be located. Basically, two criteria were applied. First is the location should be based on zoning, and secondly, that the dispensaries should be located at least 1,000 feet from sensitive receptors. It's one of those horrible technocratic terms, and specifically, we mean by sensitive receptors, residential zones and existing residences, schools for children, churches and places of worship, public parks, commercial recreational uses that attract children, and daycare centers. So, these are all places in which you find the regular presence of children. So, once these criteria are applied, one ends up with this map. The pink or the purple represents sensitive receptors, plus the 1,000-foot buffer, and the green area is the area left over where a dispensary could potentially be located. And that's all in the heavy industrial zone, just to orient you. This black line's the freeway, and then you have Greenville, and then, I believe, this is Las Pecitas up here, and this is the lab. So, you're looking at the eastern end of the city. And that area encompasses approximately 386 acres. And based on a windshield survey by staff, there are about, or at least, a dozen or so multi-tenant buildings, which could be potential sites for a dispensary. And in addition, there are a number of vacant parcels if a dispensary is willing to build from the ground up. So, there are a number of potential sites within that 386 acres for a dispensary. So, the police department was consulted on this map, and their response was, if the city were to permit dispensaries, that this heavy industrial area is an appropriate location for a dispensary or dispensaries. So, staff is seeking direction from the city council as to the appropriateness of the location criteria and the resulting area in which dispensaries could be permitted. And if the council gives staff the thumbs up tonight on the location, staff will proceed with developing a regulatory framework for establishing and operating a dispensary in the city, and return to council by the end of this year with an outline of potential regulations for operating a dispensary in the city. So, that concludes staff's remarks, and we're available for any questions.
Questions for Mr. Lee? Counselor Turner?
I just have a quick question. What happened to the west side of town?
So, we did the mapping exercise, and there are smaller windows, but they don't, they include multiple zoning districts. So, there could be spot areas on the west side of town, but it, just kind of keep it simple and have a large area in which a dispensary could locate, this would be the best possible option.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious, because there's a whole lot of Livermore missing from the map, and...
So, we had suggested that we concentrate on the industrial zones, and that's why we've identified this area. If you wanted to identify other zoning districts, then...
Yeah, that's fine, I was just curious as to, because isn't that the same zoning that we have, like, out by Gillick?
There are a lot of plan developments, so that complicates things, because the city would have to amend each plan development. So, a number of the sites on the west side of town are PDs or planned developments.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Any other questions? Vice Mayor Gary?
If I heard you correctly, even though these are some large parcels, some with large buildings, are there currently smaller, aka storefront, leasable spaces, or are we exempting because there's actually no practical way to get a square foot lease of the size they may want?
Right. As I mentioned, staff conducted a windshield survey, and there are a number of smaller industrial buildings that I think are marketed towards small businesses, so they have multiple tenant spaces. Yes, and I think there are about a dozen or so in this area. So, I believe those are potential sites for the dispensaries.
And then, my question, if I heard correctly, on the west side, it's more a condition of trying to find a contiguous zoning across the city in the two industrial areas, rather than you couldn't find any acre meeting all of the sensitive receptor criteria? So, in other words, did you start with a criteria, and did you find some acreage that had some PUD and some weird zoning on it, or did you just only go for heavy industrial and apply the criteria?
We went for a consistent zoning district, because as Mr. Lee mentioned, it would be more challenging to then go in and amend each PD, because you'd have to do them one by one.
Okay, so, my comment, just to my peers, would be, step off here if it's the pleasure after we hear the public input. But if the practical reality is they can't find leasing, you may still need to go back to the other commercial industrial park, apply the receptor criteria, and if there's buildings, parcels available, then figure out, are they otherwise acceptable? Just a thought, how you get, how you apply the receptor versus work the zoning.
Mr. Lee, are there any other cities in the Tri-Valley that are contemplating medical marijuana dispensaries?
Not that staff is aware of.
And Leander. They have the green.
But I mean, with the, with a lot of the movement going on in the state, and I know that we are also, the state's probably not going to have any rules in place until 2018. But I'm just curious if anybody else in the, in the Tri-Valley was looking to put in a dispensary, so it's only Livermore. Okay, thank you. I do have some cards. Any further questions for staff at this point? You're thinking really hard there, Councilmember.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, okay. Anthony Rangel, Christopher Henkel, Michaela Toskas.
Hello again, staff and council. I would just like to know, the area that's proposed, in my 10 years of working with local municipalities, police, DEA officials, everybody that's come at us to try and wean out the bad players in different areas of the state where I've worked, this is a very, very, very logical area for operation. I've actually proposed similar restraints to licensing to Mayor Marchand and Chief Harris over a year ago, as well as site proposals to the planning division for the exact same criteria. This type of criteria with the industrial zoning helps on multiple levels. One, it helps dispensaries maintain security of their facilities, as well as the inventory that's housed within the industrial complex. It also helps, it helps businesses achieve ISO certification, so that way, we are not just moving forward with what seems to be logical, but also what's safe, nationally considered safe. I'm sorry, as it gets later, it gets harder to function.
Yes, sir.
I do know for a fact, though, in that particular industrial area that is highlighted in green, both of them, there are multiple landlords with very enlarged buildings that, according to the city's standing zoning maps, do qualify for operation of a dispensary in that particular area. As somebody that, you know, worked in all levels of this industry for 10 years, I think that this is a very, very good step that Livermore is making. Thank you. Also, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Turner, you asked on September 12th about the intake of patients, the, I found the best answer for this is, according to the federal marijuana program conducted at the Research Triangle Institute in Mississippi, patients who intake marijuana should be consuming 300 grams a month at a rate of 10 grams a day in the form of a joint smoked, if that, if that helps you understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rangel. Christopher Henkel, Michaela Toskas, Adam Pine.
Hi, my name is Christopher Eckler, and I represent Higher Elevation Community Collective. Looking at this map here, I strongly support the city council's decision in moving forward with the proposed planning. I think it is just an absolutely phenomenal idea to go forward with this. The area is very secure, it's safe, it's secluded. I've lived in Livermore pretty much almost all my life, and I really would like to see this go forward. I believe that Livermore is very progressive in the way that it conducts business within the city and incorporated Livermore, and I absolutely love the fact that we are actually talking about this and going forward and making, you know, tread in moving forward with this decision. The industrial area that is selected here is absolutely phenomenal, and I would just like to second that I think that's what we should go forward with in the future, so...
Thank you, Mr. Henkel. Michaela Toskas, Adam Pine.
First of all, I wanted to say thank you to the city council for allowing me to speak tonight. My name's Michaela Toskas, and I am the CEO and founder of Higher Elevation Community Collective. I provide medical cannabis to patients that are critically ill. I love helping people, and I have a lot of passion for what I do. I am also a patient, I was diagnosed with seizures when I was eight months old. I've had seizures my whole life, and ever since I started using medical cannabis, my seizures have completely stopped. Without the use of pharmaceuticals, I'm able to drive, it's been great, it's been awesome. I love helping people, there's been so many people I've helped with cancer, cerebral palsy, that have just done great off of using medical cannabis. They've had horrible side effects with all the pharmaceutical drugs, they're horrible side effects. I do not want to operate a delivery service in the area, but I am all for operating an actual storefront. We have had a ton of support from the community as far as opening up, we're able to open up a storefront with your guys' approval. I believe this could be a huge benefit for people in this community, and for safer access for medical cannabis under your guys' regulation. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Toskas. Adam Pine.
Good evening, council, honorable mayor, staff. It's a pleasure to be here.
Good evening, council, honorable mayor, staff. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Adam Pine and I operate the Floral Elements. We're a farm-to-patient collective in the area. First of all, I'd like to applaud the city for making progress on this issue. We've heard a lot of serious issues here tonight. My hat's off to you guys. You guys do a difficult job. And it's just really encouraging to see medical cannabis progressing in Livermore along with a lot of very serious issues that you guys have to deal with. So, thank you very much. I appreciate that. A few issues to consider here. First off, this is an excellent start, I believe. Access is the number one goal here. There's a few issues that come to mind that I would just like to comment on. This is pretty deep Livermore. And to be honest, if Pleasanton or Dublin were to take any cues from Livermore and institute some kind of an ordinance like you're asking Mayor Marchand, are they going to implement a dispensary system closer to the Tri-Valley, the center of the Tri-Valley, it would pretty much, it would make it very difficult to compete with that, with that dispensary because you're so far out here. It's just a, it's a challenging area. If, if anything, we're to start moving westward. That's not only Dublin and Pleasanton, it's also Livermore. If Livermore decides, you know what, this is really working out in this industrial area, we're thinking about possibly moving a little bit more west or opening up the western part of the city that have some maybe light, light commercial industrial zones, that kind of thing. Those dispensaries that would be in those locations would have a huge advantage. And we're talking about something here that a dispensary is very intensive. You have to do significant security build outs, significant build outs to do the, to have a correct and well-run dispensary system. And if you're going to have onsite cultivation, that's a whole other set of requirements and expenditures that you'd have to do. So, you're talking about quite a bit of money upfront and investment upfront to get one of these dispensaries going the way it should be run and the way it's, would be required in a state like Livermore to be run. So, you know, I guess my concern is if there was any chance that we could move more westward, I think it would be worth exploring. Because like we mentioned with the homeless situation, this is a bit of a regional issue here since there's no other access in the area. And I hate to put that on Livermore along with, you know, the homeless issue that we discussed earlier. But this is something that Pleasanton, Dublin, San Ramon, you know, patients in those communities are going to use this dispensary service. I mean, it's inevitable. So, I just think it would be prudent to see if we can move westward a little bit. If that's not an option, I totally understand. And I think this is a great start. And if this is what council decides is prudent and what staff decides is most realistic, I'll happily support that and we will make it work. Also, from a delivery aspect, you have to consider, you know, the way traffic is these days, you know, doing a delivery from that point would be fairly difficult with the way traffic is and whatnot. With that said, I'm looking forward to the next steps and discussion of future dispensary operational regulations. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Pine, thank you. Okay, that's it for the cards I've got for tonight. Closing the public comment. Bring it back to council. All right. You were looking real hard there.
No radio, just, yeah, down the way here. I think this is an appropriate location to study. You know, the location, I think it is, it's far easier to determine and with staff's criteria, I think it's fairly obvious, this area. I'm actually not really interested in looking western. I think that that would create more concern with the public being a little bit more centrally located. I'm very interested in the operational regulations in the next step and what we can do, you know, with the, it was mentioned in the staff report about the 2,000-foot radius between dispensary dispensaries. I've always said that I think that if we go this route, we should look at a single dispensary to begin with and see what the public reception is because that's another concern. We've been working on this now for how long? Two years at least, since I've been up here, longer than that. But we've been seriously looking at it in more recent times. I am concerned, though, that this would be another example of us discussing this and holding public comment periods and then we get close to implementing it and then you get people coming out of the woodwork to oppose it. So, whatever we can do to publicize it, to get the word out, to make sure people know that we're working on this, I think that's critical at this step. It's just, you know, I hope it doesn't go that route. It becomes very frustrating to, you know, go through this many meetings and put this amount of thought into it and then at the last minute, people show up and say, nope, I now, I have an issue with it, which is their right. But again, it's cracking that code of how do you reach the public next door, whatever we need to do to get the word out, to make sure that people know that this is coming. But I support this zoning. I think it's an appropriate location. I am just up the road there on Vasco. Not saying that I'll be a client or anything, but I know the area very well. Drive by it every, every council meeting. So, you know, again, I think the operational regulations in the next step is what I'm very, very interested in, is how we vet potential applicants and the security, you know, all the things that I've mentioned before. But I think this is an appropriate zone.
Vice Mayor Gary?
I concur. It's an appropriate zone and I think we also heard the business requests issue of citing and competition. And I think we've all been, at least the majority of us, I think if not unanimously, that this is a low number, probably the lowest permissive as we work with the regulations. And I think as you bring the final set of regulations back, you include something that does not leave the back door open to apply the receptors elsewhere. If there's enough sites here to meet the demand, and I'm going to repeat my new mantra, Livermore first. I think a lot of us have discussed, we are not trying to fix the Tri-Valley, including all the way up to 680. This is for Livermore medical patients. That's the demand curve we're feeding. And if there's enough space out there to make the regulations work for a small amount, we're done. And let's just make that clear in the zoning ordinance or any paperwork you bring back next spring. And I appreciate the, the community outreach thing. I think that to some degree can delay a little bit only because they're going to want to hear the regulations. It's like, well, what are you really doing? Zoning's fine, but if Prop whatever passes on the 8th, what's that really mean? No, that's not necessarily what this council's ever, at least my recollection, ever indicated interest in. This is a medical issue. You've appropriately cited it. Let's proceed with regulation.
Councilmember Warner?
Oh, I think this is a good first step and that I think we've learned on some other issues that we need the community input. And so, I would say we target this area. We develop the regulations and then we make sure as best we can that we have the appropriate number of workshops and get the buy-in. And I agree that there's always a chance that somebody will come out of the woodwork, but let's minimize it. But I think that going any, you know, making any final decisions without really getting the sense of the community on this one, I think, I think we need to get that sense and make, and make sure that we really have that sense before we go down the path here.
Can I second that idea of a workshop specifically? You know, and, you know, maybe, maybe we hold the workshop and very few residents or, you know, people attend. I don't know. But just something where we can have that kind of back and forth discussion and really advertise it and get it out there. I don't know if that's, you know, what it would take. But again, you know, getting the word out, I think, is critical at this point.
Councilmember Turner?
Great for staff, finally. So, thank you. I absolutely appreciate it. I think that the zoning is in a great place. I think it's appropriate. I do, I know tonight, that's not part of our agenda tonight, but I do think small is good. I'd prefer not to have one. I'd prefer to have two, just because I think consumers deserve a choice. That's just my personal preference. But I, and I'm absolutely, Livermore first, I think, is going to be our council goal-setting new mantra, maybe, depending on who's sitting here next, in two weeks. But, yeah, I'm all for it. I think it's great. And the community outreach, the people I've talked to, some people are like, oh, I'm not against it. But as long as it's somewhere, I don't see it, I don't care. I have, I have yet to find anybody that, as long as it's away from a school and away from general population and I have yet to find anybody that's upset about it. And I've advertised it pretty well. This is an issue of mine. And so, I, but, community outreach absolutely is, is important. And so, the workshop idea or something, just, and throwing it out on next door, saying, you know, we're looking at the ordinance, we're looking at the rules, community come out and hear it. So, I think that's a great idea.
Okay. Well, I concur with the council. Since we've heard several folks talk about they want to start small, this is about Livermore first, I would also support the staff point about the 2,000-foot buffers to limit the number for this, to start, because we can always, we can always loosen that. But it's really hard to tighten things up after the fact. So, I would support the 2,000-foot buffer between the dispensaries. So, we can start small, Livermore first. And with that, I'd be willing to entertain a motion.
With the, with the community workshops, et cetera.
With the regulations.
Right.
Oh, certainly. So, you want to make the motion?
Sure. Possible this will be my last one ever.
I doubt that.
This could be my very last motion and very appropriate. This is number five of my campaign promises that I made five years ago. So, yes, I move that we adapt staff regulations and consider this green spot area zoning appropriate for cannabis dispensaries with delivery option.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Well, no, I'm just, you said, and, and delivery options, does that get into regulations? I was just thinking through, was the motion getting into regulations versus zoning? That's all. It's not, my silence...
Well, we're getting, okay, yeah, yeah. And I can pull that if that makes it confusing. So, yes, appropriate zoning for a dispensary and we'll just consider the regulations later.
Second, second.
Okay.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Turner, seconded by Vice Mayor Gary. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously.
Okay, some clarification here to staff. We understand the basis of the motion. Your previous direction to us is to bring back the first step at regulations at a meeting in December, and we are planning to do that. At that meeting, what we will do is also propose a outreach process for the combination of the zoning and the regulations at that point. Does that incorporate the discussion that we heard? Are we getting that right? Yes. All right, we will do that.
All right. Okay, so on that, it is 10:59. So, if we get to 11 o'clock, do we make a motion? Well, do you want to make a motion to continue after 11 o'clock? Or are we...
I'll also move that we just finish off. Matters initiated.
Move?
Sure.
Second? Okay. All in favor? Pardon me? Oh. Okay, so, okay, so, we made the motion. We're going to slog on and finish up. Okay, so...
We got a motion one. Quick vote on that?
Quick vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Okay. Council committee reports and matters initiated. Councilmember Warner?
First of all, did the committee commission interviews and selection process for both the airport commission and human services. And we had a lot of good applicants and the only regret is that it was, it was hard. We couldn't choose everybody. And I would encourage those that weren't selected to apply again for other positions because I think they were all very excellent. And it's, again, very good to see the, the number of citizens that like to contribute and we've got a lot in need. And I'll let Councilmember Spodowski add to that as well when he gets to his, because he was the other person. So, real quick, I just wanted to cover some of the things that were in public comment. First, I want to, the city manager, if you could refresh me the memory on the tree replanting because it was brought up by Mr. Stein. But I think it was not that long ago that we talked about what the plant was. And so, if you could say what we're doing there, that, appreciate it.
Previous council direction to staff was to do two things, was to systematically review the publicly owned trees, street trees, median trees, landscaping trees that the city controls, and to remove those which are dead. And then, assuming that we begin to get something that begins to look like reasonable rainfall this winter, to begin a process of replacing those trees that we have removed. As you know, we have removed several hundred trees citywide. And so, the speaker was correct on that piece of it. Your direction was, of course, to wait until the rainy season and essentially, so we would be doing essentially spring plantings. By that time, we'll have a pretty good indication of the rainfall. We'll also be doing some landscape median work beginning this fall that you have previously directed us to do.
Okay. And second, Mr. Burnham has talked a couple of times about the Zone 7 rates and I'm not quite sure what's the right process to kind of respond appropriately. If you could comment on that. I mean, is there a, is we just, how do we, how do we talk about this? Or what do we, what do we want to do?
Well, the first question is whether you wish to talk about this. This has to do with essentially your rate setting and your role as rate setter for your utility. Obviously, there have been changes in law and court interpretation of that law. We are in the process of going through all of the preliminary work to bring you back rates. Those rates, when we do bring them back, ultimately, we'll be consistent with the law. So, at this point, staff doesn't need any further direction because we're in process already. If the council wishes to discuss this in the absence of actual work to do, we can bring that...
No, no, real quick. I think you answered it. It was just, there's a timeframe in which we'll be discussing that. And when is that?
Yes, that'll be... Shoot. Yeah, I'm, I don't know the answer to that. We will get that...
That's on my request. If you just let me know and then I can tell Mr. Burnham when it's appropriate to talk about it. So, three, there was the article in the paper about these tickets in the sports complex in Oakland. And I would just suggest that under means and norms, when we talk about it, that we just make sure that we're all good with respect to whatever similar situations we have. So, make that request. Because we do get occasionally things, nothing in the million range like they do, but we do get stuff and we'll just make sure we're compliant. And then, the final thing I want to suggest under matters initiated is with respect to the conversations we've been having about the downtown specific plan. I mean, we had a motion about whether we limit the housing at 50% of what went out in the RFP. We couldn't kind of get that figured out. Couldn't get, you know, agreement on that. We had the suggestion that we put a moratorium in place and we couldn't get that one done. But I do believe that, I personally am uncomfortable with the fact that we have the current downtown specific plan, zoning that was put together with the thought process of 12 years ago. And that included Bart, you know, things like Bart's Downtown and a big regional theater. So, we do have some parcels that could come in and play. And I don't particularly think we're covered enough to prevent the projects coming in under the current rules that we may not like to have. Because I do believe that we need to refresh the downtown specific plan. It'll take a while. So, I believe in a, I'll make a third attempt here to get us to where we can limit the residential building while we take the appropriate amount of time to refresh the plan. So, my suggestion is that we direct staff to start the process and it'll include the planning commission so that we expeditiously revise the downtown specific plan zoning to limit the height of residential to three stories until we figure out what we're going to do in the downtown area. So, if I could get a, I'd love to see some, a lot of heads nodding that maybe we can get there with that suggestion. get there with that suggestion.
So that is, as we, this is, would be in place as we begin the plan, as we begin rebooting the downtown.
So the vision is this, that fairly quickly, probably in the February timeframe, we can have done an appropriate process with the planning commission so that we can specifically revise the height limit for residential in the downtown specific area to three stories. Doesn't require emergency declaration, it doesn't require a specific number or less in terms of the housing units. It just simply says that we have heard the community's concern about the high-density housing that was envisioned under an out-of-date plan and this just very simply puts a cap at three stories and then we'll figure it out. But that we were very clear to anybody who's potentially developing these areas where we're coming from. So this is something that I think we can do pretty quickly and easily and it'll cover us going forward.
Just... Just a quick question. The growth site, that, I recall having seen some massing plans for that with three stories in the fringes and then four stories in the back. How would that impact that?
So the, the growth property came in with a special request a few years ago and was approved for higher building heights to a maximum height of four floors and 55 feet, provided the fourth floor does not extend for more than 60% of any street frontage. So you would essentially have a combination of three and four stories with four and, four floors and 55 feet being the max.
So how would that be impacted, but they've already been entitled?
No.
Oh, that was, that was their request?
So the specific plan was amended to provide that special exception for the growth property. They were intending to come back with an entitlement, but then we got into 2008, 2009 and the economy collapsed.
Okay, so they have not been entitled?
They have not, although there is a, a potential developer that is out there working with the current property owner on that site.
So I heard the request to agendize it and bring it back, back to, back to us, so just in terms of agendizing, yeah, absolutely, it's consistent with the direction I think a lot of us have been trying to move in. And then we can get into, when they bring it back to us, what's the definition of three and?
Sure, okay.
Blah, 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 but that's not before us. What's before us is to agendize it, yes.
So we got three head nods, yeah. Okay, question?
How quickly can you bring it back?
Assuming that we're now asking two different questions. The first question being, when could the council have it agendized to discuss? And then the second, assuming that you said, hey, this is a good idea now that we've discussed it and put these parameters around it. So as a discussion, boy, I could just feel the heat from that side over there. So technically, we can agendize it for your next meeting, that's not very much time for us, but that's.
That's what I'm looking for.
And then, which is what we thought your question was.
I'd acquiesce a meeting after next, but still in November.
All right, let us, if you could give us, if you could give us just... Because we've got the extra week in there, we can at least get you a discussion item. It will not be beautiful, but it will be adequate.
What would be easiest for you?
Oh, don't ask that, that's not a fair question, honorable mayor. That is not a fair question, honorable mayor. The question was, can we provide you adequate staff work so that you could have a meaningful discussion on the question of whether to limit those sites in downtown that are permitted by right to be four stories, to limit those to three stories and what the process would be and what properties that would impact? We can bring that for you, back for you at your next meeting.
Okay.
And then if three of you decide to tell us to go work on that, we can give you a timeline, we'll put that in the staff report as well.
Okay. So I see three head nods, four.
Just add, I think it's an excellent idea.
Five head nods.
I see five.
Okay, very good. Five head nods. Anything else? Yeah, it's still early. Vice Mayor?
Easy, my only meeting to report was the monthly meeting with Livermore Main Street a week ago and nothing to report of.
Okay, very good, thank you. Councilmember Turner?
I have nothing to report.
Councilspodowski?
Again, the advisory body interviews, we saw them sworn in tonight, it was a great group of applicants and in particular, it was a very tough decision for the airport, so again, encourage anybody to reapply with the next opening. Other than that, LAVTA Projects and Services Committee earlier today, we discussed potential name and branding changes for the service, so that's been kicked around for a while. Nothing, no matters to initiate, I haven't found a bird in Livermore that we can adopt yet, but maybe that'll be the next one.
All right. October 12th, I attended the Alameda County Mayor's Conference, they got updates from the, leaving California cities. On the 18th, I, we had a LAFCO special meeting dealing with the Eden Township Healthcare District, which actually doesn't operate a hospital, but they do operate properties. 10-19, fun stuff, Pinot's Palette has opened on South El, combines the fun of drinking wine and painting, so that's, and they actually have children's programs too, but it's just, it's just the painting for the children, so, but a great concept, where else but in Livermore. And this afternoon, the Livermore Police Department, we had a swearing in and badge pinning. Four officers were added to the, to the police department, we had two promotions and also hired three special support staffs, so very, very glad to be there for that and with that, seeing no further business before the council, meeting adjourned.